We're live and now recording.
Great, thanks Katie. Can we have roll call please?
Mr. Antonio?
Here.
Mr. Badger?
Here.
Mr. Bleefeld?
Here.
Ms. Kiyabachi? Mr. Frank? Mrs. Hayman?
Here.
Ms. Carrie Nikes?
Here.
Dr. Morris?
Here.
Mrs. Ginsburg?
Yes.
Gavin Lewis Richmond?
Here.
And Harrison Ernst?
Here.
Eight present, one absent, and two student board reps this evening.
Thanks Katie. Alright, we're now gonna do the Pledge of Allegiance and I have two helpers here this morning, this afternoon. Tommy and Marilyn with Tommy's birthday office, so wish them a happy birthday then. Alright, can you help us? Thank you so much guys for helping us.
Happy birthday!
That was awesome guys, thank you. Well, welcome everyone to this October 30th meeting of the Wissahicken School Board. It's great to see so many familiar faces here and um, let's see, and also I want to do a special shout out here for the Halloween costume. I think that's awesome. I wish I would've thought after the rest-
They're a costume?
Oh! So thank you for dressing up. Alright, well looking at our agenda, we first listed our prior meetings. We, and I apologize, my computers not working, so if I miss something, let me know. We had a meeting on September 26th, then October 2nd, October 16th was our Health and Wellness, and October 16th was also our last Racial Equity Oversight Committee meeting. And our upcoming meetings, we have a meeting on November 13th, that'll be our next regular public board meeting. November 20th, we'll have a Curriculum and Technology Committee meeting, Racial Equity Oversight Committee meeting as well. December 4th will be our Board Reorganization and Work Session, and then December 11th will be our next regular public board meeting. So that lists out all of our prior and upcoming meetings, and we'll now move on to presentations, and I believe we did rework them already in the agenda it looks like?
Yes.
Okay. So we're gonna start with our high school monthly highlights.
Hi, so yes, you can see it's the month of October, we're very excited for Halloween. So this month, we celebrated National Hispanic Heritage Month, which was from September 15th to October 15th. The new Hispanic Latina Association, or HLA, at the high school hosted a Hispanic Heritage Month celebration on Tuesday. It was really fun. There's a mariachi band, and a lot of like Hispanic and Latina culture, cultural foods, and a lot of people came, so that was cool. And then we had senior panelists, including me. We talked to freshmen about what it meant to be at the high school, and like how to get into leadership, leadership positions throughout their years at the high school. And then, a special shout out to Sanai, she was the 2023 recipient of the Wissahicken Opportunity Scholarship. The scholarship provided one student from the high school, a full four-year scholarship to attend Buena Mercy University as an early education major, and then return to WIS as a K-4 teacher. So that's really cool, and I know she's super excited about that. And then seniors, we had to buy our cap and gowns by October 27th, so graduation is kicking off, and I'm very excited about that.
Alright, my name's Harrison Ernst, I'm the junior board rep. We had eight seniors that were inducted to the National Merit Scholarship Program, which is wonderful. Additionally, Mrs. Shibaji's Environmental Science has been discovering native tree species, which may not sound too consequential, but I think promoting sustainability and ecological consciousness is very important in our younger generations. Additionally, on November 15th, we have a blood drive, I'm very excited about. It's a day three, and every donation can save up to three lives, so I'm very excited to have participation in that. I think that's all we got.
Well, great, that was a lot of exciting news, so thank you so much. Are there any comments or questions from my fellow board members? Joe?
Yeah.
My main comment is just to welcome Harrison. This is your first board meeting as a student board rep, so thanks for joining, and we look forward to your participation over the next couple of years. And what, what exactly are you dressed as tonight?
First of all, thank you very much, I appreciate that. I'm very excited to be here, and I'm also very excited that I'm dressed up. I am, I'm Cody Mavericks, he's a Surfing Penguin from the children's animated surf movie Surf South. So-
That's what I thought.
Yes, well yeah, so Surfing Penguin.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
I have a quick question. When is our first Opportunity Scholarship recipient come, graduate and come back to us? That soon?
The first recipient is, is currently a sophomore at Buena Mercy, so that would be one, two, three school years.
That's very exciting. That's my favorite award at senior award night. It's like, I don't know, everyone, I get like tingles.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a really magical event. It's, as noted, full, full scholarship room, tuition room and board for four years. And then the student comes back and teaches here, so she'll be a colleague anytime soon.
Any other comments or questions?
I just wanna say one more shout out to the high school. Our Wissahicken Water Polo Girls finished fifth at States, which is pretty huge.
That's awesome. Anything else? Alright, well thank you so much guys. Alright, now we will move on to our Wake Up and Learn presentation with Dr. Morse. Welcome, Dr. Morse.
Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity. I am going to share my screen in order to be able to present the talk. So my understanding is that we wanna try and go through the presentation and try to get, have some time for Q and A, so I'm gonna try and go through this as quickly as possible. And what I was informed that, that was of interest to kind of really review is sleep in terms of its normal development, but then also specifically focusing in on teen sleep and some of the dynamics regarding the biologic changes that occur during teen sleep. So some of the things that I'm gonna try to review as quickly as possible is kind of defining sleep, why is it important, what are the changes that are observed over time? A brief discussion around sleep-wake circadian and ultradian rhythms, this is the overarching control of sleep. Zooming in specifically on teen sleep changes, and then hopefully we'll have some time for, for some questions. So I always start every presentation with what sleep is not, and it's not the following things. It's not a period of inactivity, a temporary coma, or something to fill a time when a person is inactive. And although it sounds like I'm making jokes, these are in fact true historic depictions of what people had to perceive sleep to be. And the final thing, as a Jersey girl who trained in New York, it's not optional. So the sleep when I'm dead mentality actually will only get you there a lot quicker, because of the fact that sleep has such a critical component to overarching health and wellness. So in fact, it is a brain-derived homeostatic process. What that means in layman's terms is, is that it's something your body must do. And so when I describe that specific state, one of the things I like to make an analogy to is your body temperature is also a homeostatic process. And so we generally will pay a lot of focus to that, where you should be a balmy 98.6, but if you had wide deviations, like your temperature being 94 or 104, you would have immediate reaction by going to your doctor, and not just because of what that absolute number is, but what it represents is your body being in dysfunction. And so that same concept exists when we're talking about sleep, if you're not getting the adequate duration, quality, or timing of sleep. And this has become so critical that even societies like the American Heart Association has updated their life simple seven to life substantial eight by including sleep as a risk factor when not adequate of being a contributor to cardiovascular disease. So why is sleep important? So when looking at teens, it helps the brain make memories, improving learning and performance. It really does play a critical role when you look at the steps that are required for sleep, which is, I mean, for learning, which is acquisition consolidation and retrieval. An acquisition and retrieval occurs on a day-by-day basis in school, where you're teaching them new things and asking them to recall it. Consolidation is occurring on a night-by-night basis, and really is, is extremely necessary. And when we do fragment that or reduce that, we negatively impact the learning opportunity. It also helps the body stay healthy with keeping a normal immune system when we are having dysfunctional sleep. It actually puts us in a pro-inflammatory state, meaning it's more likely to actually experience disease, as well as things like infections. It also helps sports performance by optimizing reaction times, speed, and accuracy. And so although that is hugely important for, for student athletes, not everyone is a student athlete, but when you're talking about your 11th and 12th graders who are new drivers, this actually has significant implications in driving. In fact, there have been studies that have been performed in healthy volunteers where they'd sleep deprived versus had them do kind of forceful intoxication with alcohol. And what it has demonstrated is that those who are sleep deprived actually develop a worse reaction time performance and worse judgment than those who become intoxicated by alcohol. So there really is a significant impact in regards to reaction time. It also can help with recovery after injuries, especially head injuries, and it can be very far-reaching. And then the final piece is that it can help with judgment, mood, and behavior. And so the studies that have looked at this in a bidirectional way of, is there problems with sleepy, there are the quality or duration of sleep, have demonstrated it's a predictive factor for the development of mood instability, risk-taking behaviors such as trying illicit substances and becoming addicted to those substances, but also has a bidirectional relationship with things like depression, anxiety, and even suicidality. So really is a very critical component to all areas of life. So when thinking about sleep, as I mentioned, duration, quality, and timing are all of the things that we do need to focus on. And so nationally, there tends to be a hyperfixation on duration. Are we getting the right hours of sleep? However, just recognizing that all these are factors, and, and part of the reason that there's even a conversation about delayed school start times, although we talk about duration, is actually due to the timing, the circadian changes that are seen. But it is important to recognize all of these different factors, because in fact, there are over 70 types of sleep disorders. So even though there's a lot of focus on our teens getting the right number of hours of sleep, there are 69 other types of problems that can exist that can also contribute to why teens aren't getting the right quality or timing or duration of sleep. And so I, that is important to be mindful of, because that is something that I think is important to address when thinking about teens in general, and also all the changes that we're trying to institute. So you have to crawl before you can walk. I'm a neurologist, and so as a pediatric neurologist, developmental milestones are critically important. However, the reason I give this illustration is because this is representing kind of human brain development, and that there is, changes are occurring from being in utero to overtime, and we actually are seeing that the brain continues to develop up until about mid twenties. And so when looking at this, we also see that, I'm gonna skip this slide because it will eat up too much time. We can also see that sleep occurs in that same type of neurodevelopmental trajectory. So the younger you are, the more sleep you need, and the older you are, the reduced duration of sleep. So that's not the only changes that occur over time, that also mirror developmental milestones. There also is a normal development of consolidation of sleep, as well as kind of shifting the bedtimes back. And so what you can see here, this is from some of the publications that I've put out in either textbooks or other manuscripts, is kind of giving this overarching development over time. And the reason why I say that this mirrors developmental milestones is because, as I mentioned earlier, sleep has such a critical role in learning, that this actually does mirror what we see in regards to what are the needs in terms of learning experience. And so again, when talking about sleep in schools, although they seem so divergent from one another, because students shouldn't be sleeping in schools, sleep is actually really critical important at night, because it only is going to further optimize the performance in school. There was recently just some really great studies that have been done in college-age students that demonstrate for every reduction, every kind of hour reduction in sleep, that they saw a corresponding reduction in GPA. So there is this ongoing developmental maturation of sleep, so we saw that the duration of sleep changes over time, the consolidation of sleep over time, but also how we cycle through sleep changes over time. And the infant whose brain is not mature enough yet to even develop normal sleep-wake cycles, they only cycle between active and quiet sleep. In the adolescent, they have a different, the child and adolescent has a different distribution of their sleep throughout the night. And this is critical to point out because of the fact that in your non-REM2 and REM3 sleep, this is going to give a very large contribution to learning performance. However, in your non-REM3, we're spending a lot more time there, because we also are having a lot of important hormones being produced, like growth hormone. And so both of these are contributing to overall growth and development in appropriate trajectories. So in terms of the ultradian rhythm, this is just some important things to kind of discuss. So these are the different cycling through sleep. And so again, when talking about sleep, there is a whole lot, you could do a whole lecture on just sleep and learning by itself, but just demonstrating that this way we cycle through sleep is just as critical in terms of the relevance to overall educational performance as duration of sleep. And so the cycling through sleep does have differential contributions to what we are kind of learning and, and need to respond to. So declarative learning is kind of that one plus one is two, I can declare to you how I got there. Non-declarative learning would be kind of like maturic learning, or learning how to play an instrument. And so that's kind of that more repetitive activity. There also is some evidence that REM sleep has a significant contribution to creative thought and emotional processing. So seeing that all of the different stages of sleep have very, very significant contributions to daytime performance, but may have differential contributions. And so the, the sleep spindles, and so we've seen in non-REM2 and REM3 sleep, tend to have a higher degree of contribution to the types of things that are being judged in regards to learning during the daytime in school. So the factors that contribute to sleep-wake, so this is the part that I'm gonna talk a little bit slower on because of the fact that this is going to be what changes over time, and is very specific to the concerns in teenagers, which we'll review a little bit later. So many times when people talk about sleep-wake cycles, they think of only the circadian rhythm, and they generally are thinking of melatonin puts me to sleep. And I'm going to challenge that today in telling you that is not accurate. When we're looking at the sleep-wake cycle, there is genetic contributions to both your circadian rhythm, as well as your homeostatic sleep drive. And so there, in 2017, the Nobel Prize was given to three scientists who actually characterized clock genes. And those are genes that are present in every single cellular body that actually gives a day-night rhythm kind of performance for each cellular function. And that is also going to contribute to people's circadian patterns. So there are differences in circadian patterns, where some people may be the morning lark, they're more likely to wake up early and go to bed early, and some may be more of the night owl, go to, going to bed later and waking up later. And then other people may be kind of this net neutral. In terms of your homeostatic sleep drive, this is something that wants to put you back to sleep. It is in fact the thing that actually puts you to sleep. And when you do go to sleep, the circadian rhythm actually keeps you asleep. These two factors contribute to your sleep-wake cycle. However, there are a lot of external factors outside of your biology that are gonna contribute to your sleep-wake cycle, including things like stress, illness, a sleep-wake disorder, not only your own body temperature, but external temperatures, what you're eating, both the content and the timing of your food, as well as medications and other things like illicit substances. So this is a slide that is giving a, a description of the interaction between those processes that I was describing, your homeostatic sleep drive and your circadian drive for arousal. So it's actually your circadian rhythm that's keeping you awake for the majority of the day, while your homeostatic sleep drive is trying to constantly put you back to sleep. And so as you can see here, your homeostatic sleep drive is constantly saying you should go to sleep. However, your circadian rhythm is saying you should stay awake, you should stay awake, you should stay awake, until there's this inflection point. And that inflection point is where melatonin is starting to be produced, something called your dim light melatonin onset. And what allows you to go to sleep is having this optimal difference between the two. And if it was only up to your homeostatic sleep drive, you'd wake up in the middle of the night, it's actually your melatonin that keeps you asleep for the remainder of the night. When we look at all of the factors that contribute to this, the main driving factor for your homeostatic sleep drive is adenosine. Your main energy producer or user in the brain is adenosine triphosphate. So whether you're doing physical activity or just mental activity, you're using a lot of ATP, which now is creating an increase in adenosine. This is also the reason why we all reach for caffeine to help us with kind of that little bit of sleepiness we're experiencing, because those are adenosine blockers, and temporarily block the effects of, of your homeostatic sleep drive. The things that we're gonna discuss later on in regards to this interaction is that there is a reduced development of this sleep pressure in teenagers, as well as a shift in regards to the melatonin onset. And so with that, it does create a more difficult time for a teenager to be able to fall asleep at earlier hours in the evening. Now with that stated, there are other confounding factors that further distort that, and generally have to do with other obligations, like either homework or, or extracurricular activities, as well as social media and kind of scrolling on our cell phones in bright light, which now will push this further along, and make it instead of just a regular delayed sleep phase, meaning that my circadian phase has been pushed back to a pathologic delayed sleep phase, where teenagers may be more likely to fall asleep at 1, 2, 3 o'clock in the morning. And there have been a variety of different studies that have demonstrated that there also is influenced by what their biologic chronotype is. So as I mentioned on the last slide, the genetics that can influence what our clock genes are and what our genetics susceptibility is. And so different strategies have been suggested for different people who have different chronotypes. So in terms of the circadian rhythm, as I mentioned, we generally are thinking about melatonin. This is a thing that most people think about, is that lights, specifically the wavelength of blue light, talks to the brain, tells your suprachiasmatic nucleus that it's daytime, and then that talks to your pineal gland and says, do not produce melatonin. The development of melatonin, and the reason why we call it dim light melatonin onset, is, is in response to a lack of blue light. This is also the same reason as to why cell phones and things become dimmer around 4, 5, 6 o'clock, is because all of them typically have a blue light blocker already in them, and that is to try and mitigate some of this. The most recent literature in terms of studying blue light blockers and the impact on sleep-wake cycles in teenagers has actually demonstrated that the light is less impactful than the content of what they're doing. So if they're doing, watching Netflix or something that is highly engaging, that's gonna have more of an impact than actually the wavelength of the light. As I mentioned, this is the Nobel Prize, and just to kind of further illustrate the circadian pattern of every single process in our body, there actually is a circadian process to our body temperature, our bowel movements, our level of alertness, reaction time. And this is because of the fact that there is a circadian peak time of function for every single cellular process in our body. So when we're talking about teen sleep changes, the thing that is important to understand first is the fact that this is not novel to humans. It has been studied across multiple species that have demonstrated that there is a rhythm delay in this kind of adolescent period. The reason for it is not 100% clear, however, is suggested or suspicious to be related to hormonal influences from puberty. And so we think that that likely is a major contributing factor. But again, just recognizing that this is something that is preserved over multiple different species. Now, when looking at why this may occur, what is the factors that are contributing? Essentially, what is being suggested is that there may be two different models as to why the pubertal changes impacts the sleep-wake or circadian cycles. And so one is suggesting that more light exposure is occurring when the pacemaker is, is sensitive to advancing the shift, meaning that we're basically giving light at the wrong timing of the day, and then that is going to create this delay. The second is saying that it's not, it's giving the light, but it's not as sensitive, and so therefore is not having the impact. So there tends to be this concept that this is a biologic change that is seen very uniquely in teenagers, and even once potentially transitioning into college age, that we may see some modification of this. So as I mentioned, although we identify that in adolescence, there is this circadian phase delay, and as I mentioned, this change in your homeostatic sleep drive, so this slower rise of sleep pressure, those things are going to be the bio-regulatory pressures that contribute to the delay. However, we also recognize outside of the biologic pieces, there are these psychosocial pressures, which there is more ability to, to influence. So whether it's the bedtime autonomy, where they have too much autonomy and therefore going to bed later, because we do see a major transition in our con seventh and ninth graders to attentive 12th graders, academic pressure, or screen time and social networking. What we've seen by looking at international studies is that even when they've looked to see, is it the school start time, academic pressure in the performance of the school district does actually highly influence the likelihood of there being sleep disturbance. In addition to that, outside of the school start time, the school end time has actually been also highly contributory to there being a disturbance in sleep cycles. And so therefore, there have been a variety of international strategies that have been applied, that have been shown to be beneficial. Everything from changing the duration of the school day, to having alternating start times, where they actually put like a block scheduling, where they may have teens starting for one week at an early time, and teens starting on that same day at a later time, and then them switching on and off. And that has been shown to preserve, as well as looking at just overall work burden and other contributions. And so the additional factor is that because we're more sleepy, and because we have all of these things, and because we have the need to actually perform and be more awake, you then are further adding insult to injury, because many times caffeinated beverages are being taken at nighttime. And so that's gonna even more negatively impact this sleep pressure, which is then going to contribute to this, you know, greater degree. And so therefore, it makes it harder for them to actually cycle more appropriately. There is some suggestion that there may be some weekend sleep delay. From what we have seen with Wake Up and Learn is that, and also just from some other studies that have been done outside of our clinical program, it does not seem as though that there actually is much additional sleep that is occurring on the weekend. Even though they might sleep in, they tend to also be going to bed much later and waking up later, and so the total duration actually isn't greater than what they typically are getting on weekdays. So it's not a one-size-fits-all, and as I mentioned, this is kind of giving a suggestion as to what we're seeing from the childhood adolescent to the adult. And so there are these variety of things that can contribute. So there are studies that have demonstrated that chronotype of the individual, so that's that morning lark versus the night owl, does highly influence the school performance, as well as all these other factors, and kind of the timing during the day. And so the morning larks, the people who tend to wake up earlier and go to bed earlier, tend to be less disturbed by, in their school performance, because they're generally being able to perform at, at their peak, because it's in line with their circadian timing. However, there are other students who may be more of those night owls. However, again, when looking at doing a strategic influence of that chronotype, whether it's through behavioral strategies or melatonin strategies, and being able to shift that, that later evening sleep earlier, we do see the rescuing of some of the school performance and challenges. So overall, healthy sleep is defined not just by duration, but also by timing and quality of sleep. And we didn't get into much in terms of quality, but that is a very important factor. Disturbed sleep also can be represented by disturbed quality during the day, and that can be seen as school performance issues, mood or behavior issues, excessive daytime sleepiness, ADHD, and attentive and hyperactive type. And none of this is by accident, it is all by design. So sleep changes have an expected pattern over time, reflecting ongoing brain development. And as I have described this very, very quickly, and hopefully some of it was captured, it is multifaceted with both internal and external influences on both your homeostatic sleep drive, as well as your circadian rhythm. The delayed sleep phase during adolescence is conserved across species, obviously including humans, and its biologic delayed sleep phase is distinct from a delayed sleep phase syndrome, where that is typically characterized by going to sleep at like 1:00 AM or later, and generally is having daytime dysfunction associated with it. But it is also important to recognize that that is representing one of over 70 different types of sleep disorders. And there are opportunities to exist to reach all students' sleep needs. And I think it is important to kind of have these really important types of conversations to be able to evaluate all the opportunities that may actually be out there, that can be implemented as, as early as tonight. So that was my whirlwind going through all of the sleep things as quickly as I possibly could.
Thank you, Dr. Morse, that was quite impressive. So thank you for that very thorough presentation. I know your time is limited this evening, so we really appreciate you taking the time to go through all of that with us. I'm gonna open up to board members who may have questions regarding the presentation or comments. No one has any questions this evening?
I got, I have one. Dr. Morse, I think a big nu, maybe a nuance about the idea of later school, later school start times for us here is not just about students getting more sleep, but also like the timing when the sleep occurs. And so I think some of the slides that you shared that show that adolescents actually have like a, a shift in the optimal window of sleep, I thought was very interesting. And so, so thank you for that.
Sure, no problem. Yeah, and again, that I think is, is kind of the basis of what the concerns are. When we look at the delayed, schools that have adopted a delayed sleep, or- Um, when we look at the delayed, schools that have adopted a delayed sleep uh or a delayed school start time. Um, we do see that there may be some increase in total sleep times. And and obviously that also may confer some benefit in terms of academic performance in other areas. Um, uh, one of the factors that I think is is still to be discussed is whether or not that actually equips the students with the tools that are necessary um in regards to the rest of their life. And so what I mean by that is if I reinforce to a student that the only thing that can be done to protect your sleep is to change the world around you. Um, it does not actually give them any of the skill sets to be able to make the behavioral changes that may be optimal for them. Um, and so I, it's not that I'm in in dispute to delayed school start times. Um, I work with all of the academies and and very frequently speak on that. But I do think it's really important because in the schools and I've even spoken with people like Judy Owens and and Richard Millman, who are some of the initial pioneers of this. And one of the things that was most striking by the conversation with Richard is his statement of that the students in his local school district were very upset when he came to the school because no one asked the students as to whether or not this would be beneficial to them. Um, and that they did not have a positive response to it. And so I do think involving the students and being able to equip them with what other strategies is really important. Because when they get to college and school starts at eight AM, um, they don't have a choice of of saying, I'm not going to take that class. Um, or potentially in the workforce. So there are some other things I think are really important to empower the students um and be able to get at the same goals and recognizing that not all students have the same exact chronotype. And there may be also students who may be negatively detrimented by by major changes like that.
Great, thank you. Any other questions?
I have a good question. Um, Dr. Morse, you talked about um some other strategies that have been used or things that influence sleep amount with like stop time and work burden. Um, and you talked about this strategy of maybe like a week on, a week off, late start. Has any, have any of those, do you have data on how how effective any of those have been in terms of improving academic performance? Or decreasing car accidents or all the things, you know, we're worried about here?
Yeah, so in um, so these were international studies. And so one of them was in Czechoslovakia where they had done this alternating school pattern. Um, and in that school district, it did actually demonstrate an improvement in um total sleep duration. Um, when looking at some of the other studies where they have identified the duration of the school day. Um, those studies did not, they do not have the post hoc or the the after to demonstrate that when we changed it. Now, some of the variables that also heavily influence some of these studies is that not all school districts are created equal. Um, and what I mean by that is that there are some school districts where where the expected performance of students are is extraordinarily high. Um, those tend to be from a more highly affluent area, white collar performance of parents. And so therefore the expectations um tend to be even greater. And so that can sometimes contribute even when the schools do not make all the changes in the world, that they still are participating in thirty-two other extracurricular activities um in order to get into the highly competitive colleges. So one of the biggest challenges that I see for the high schools is that you're not changing the college competition, right? And so, and so it's it's, we can change some of these start times, but it doesn't necessarily um change what their competition is going to be, so they still need to do these thirty-two other things. So I think that there does need to be that broader conversation of as to what is expected of a high school student to accomplish in four years in order for them to be considered competitive. And then also being able to equip them with with time management skills to understand how they're utilizing their time and is an optimal use of their time. Um, so when we're looking at those types of studies like time management, stress management, sleep, there's a bidirectional relationship that has clearly demonstrated benefit. When we look at um, when we are augmenting um the sleep timing of the students, we do also see benefit. That one study that I had referenced in my my presentation, when they were talking about the students delayed sleep phase and actually doing chronotyping, chronotype kind of movement, moving them back so that they're going to sleep earlier. That has demonstrated improvements. Um, and so there is, I think, um, the opportunities to be able to do that. One hundred percent, I would be speaking in the face of the remainder of the seat field. If I were to say, no, you shouldn't do delayed sleep phases. My big call to action is saying that is not the cure or for or the solvent for every student. Um, and I also have a very significant worry that it also further stigmatizes students who have sleep disorders. And so many of the students um do have things like insomnia, which is not a circadian disorder, obstructive sleep apnea, restless leg syndrome. Um, uh, other sleep disorders that when we say we change the school start time, they may be more unlikely to endorse that those things occur because we tend to be a society that wears it as a badge of honor. Um, and studies have clearly demonstrated that people, children and their parents are very unlikely to report to their physician that they have a sleep issue. On a day of visit, four percent of parents are going to endorse that their child had features of a sleep issue. And in the past year, seeing your doctor, sixteen percent. Um, so it is a major problem both in in pediatrics and adults with epidemic proportions of sleep disorders that go beyond the this school start time or duration of the day.
Thank you.
And just one more question, uh, Dr. Morris. So I I understand that, you know, there is this opportunity that we might be masking sleep disorders. But how many healthcare providers can actually help a a patient who might have this issue? Like, I also feel like there might be, you know, a a gap here, so like, you know. I feel like we're we're climbing a really big mountain here, uh, because it's it's almost like what's what's the, you know, what's first, what's what's first in this situation?
One hundred percent. I I I agree with you one hundred percent. And so um, you're correct in that it has to come from all angles. It's not just that we're going, and that's it, and that's the big piece that I'm just trying to share is that I don't think it's all the responsibility of just a school to fix this problem, right? There's a bigger opportunity here and you're correct. And it's not that I think that we're masking, I think that there may be misperceptions of what someone may think is is wrong with them or right with them if they're not getting the right sleep. Um, and so in regards to how can healthcare providers help? Um, uh, they're, starting with their primary care definitely is able to be one step in the right direction. Um, you're correct that there are not enough sleep physicians in the United States to potentially be able to take care of all the students with these problems. Um, and so I do think that there is, there is, that is part of the reason why we even created Wake Up and Learn is to be able to provide those resources to students in real time so that they can work with their primary care if they can't get in with a sleep physician. Because not every sleep disorder also requires something like a sleep study. Many of them are um behavioral changes or medications that that the primary care would even be able to offer. Um, and so I do think that there are, there are multiple ways that this should be approached. And I agree with you that the school should evaluate all opportunities of how they can contribute to optimizing um the opportunity to sleep, but also recognizing that that might not be the only opportunity the school has to actually make a meaningful impact for the student.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none. Again, thank you so much. It was great seeing you again this evening, Dr. Morris. Um, again, wonderful presentation.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Have a great night, everyone.
You too.
Bye.
Hero. We're doing a hero award.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, now I'll pass it over to Jim. We're going to do the WIS Nation Hero Award recognition.
Okay, we're going to switch gears a little bit here. Um, I can't speak that fast and I don't have any charts with me right now. Um, but we have what uh is an annual very fun event, at least fun for me and fun for some other people involved. And this is what we um have come to define as the WIS Nation Hero Award. And what this is, as you recall, is annually, we just fi- identify somebody who has gone above and beyond for our students. Sometimes it's involved with, in the past, we've had people involved with the Ambler Homework Help Club. We've had people who brought food to the Boys and Girls Club and helped them learn how to cook it. We've had people who went above and beyond during the pandemic. And tonight is the unveiling of the twenty twenty-three WIS Nation Hero Award recipient. And the other piece of this is we always trick the person into coming to a meeting under false pretenses. So one person here thinks that, okay, I'll give it away somewhat. He is here for one reason, but actually he's not. He's here for a different reason. Now. See, there's a little sticky, even making the the secret even more. So here, and this is uh displayed in our um central office with all the recipients' names. Um, to start back in two thousand seventeen, you will call Lenny Robinson, Eva Bryan, Robin Betterly, Tina Durkosh, Kathleen Dearborn, Patty Fabiani. And then twenty twenty-three, I'll say his name, then I'll say a few words, is Tony Horton. Yeah, all right. Before I pass this off to uh some people, I'm going to say a few words about what exactly Tony does for us. I'm going to share with you that I got introduced to Tony about maybe six years ago or so. I'm actually the privilege to call him my friend now. And the things he does for our students, first of all, he has a team of people he comes in here with. Some, many of whom are here tonight, and I appreciate you guys being here and and women as well. Because it started out to be a program that helps mentoring for our students of color. Uh, initially primarily males of color, but we've ex- expanded that. And now the work that they do in the middle school and our high school for students of color in terms of being role models is phenomenal. And we have some people coming, and we actually have some students say a few words as well. I I had to write this down because there's way too many words for me to remember. But uh, the the name of the program is the Guide Right Program, I got that part. But um, Tony and his team are from the Abington Ambler Alumni Chapter of Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity. By the way, national award-winning chapter, I might point out. And this is all funded by the Crimson Foundation, so. And and I, before I I call up uh Ms. Latour to say a few words, just just to be clear, Tony's not even a resident of Wissaken School District. That's the piece that got me at the beginning, when we, he and I were having some conversations, like, okay, well, your kids go here, or, you know, we hear that part. No, no, I just care about kids. I care about being a role model and mentoring kids. I'm like, well, let's talk. And we talked, we became friends, and then he and his team have come to have such good impact here. Um, I couldn't think of anyone else who deserves the WIS Nation Hero Award more than Tony as a through his extended team. And what I'd like to do now is if I introduce Kaziah Latour, who as you know is our Director of Equity and Cultural Responsiveness, to say a few words about the program and how we implement it here in Wissaken.
Thank you, Dr. Chrisville. Um, so good evening, everyone. It is my pleasure to speak about our secondary mentorship program. Um, I've had the pleasure and opportunity to work closely with Tony Horton and the Guide Right Leaders of Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity Incorporated. And in terms of what we've done, and we've really structured and developed the Wissaken School District Secondary Mentorship Program so that it targeted and focused on building leadership skills for our students, embedding social and emotional learning competencies, providing them with opportunities for networking and also guiding them toward true and authentic identity for them to really come into their being. Um, cultivating their own potential that already exists within them. And so at this time, when we look at the secondary mentorship program and its evolution, it exists at the eighth grade um level at the middle school as well as throughout the high school. And it provides students with an opportunity to hear from various leaders who have different types of occupations and have shared with them their lived experiences and their hopes. And it provided them with insight and wisdom along with very insightful ways for them to accomplish their goals strategically. And so one thing I want to iterate here is that Tony remains a consummate leader and inspiration for the team. And he's a remarkable collaborator, willing to ensure the best and most rewarding positive experiences for our students. And they continue to cultivate their leadership skills through him by his sharing his personal experiences. He is an excellent role model for students and adults alike and embodies all the qualities that exemplify a WIS Nation hero. At this time, I would like to introduce Jim Kelly, who is Wissaken High School's Assistant Principal, who will then introduce our students who have been actively involved in our mentorship program and have benefited from his guidance and mentorship. At this time, Jim, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. As uh Ms. Latour mentioned, my name is Jim Kelly. I'm the Assistant Principal of Wissaken High School. Uh, it is an honor and my distinct privilege to be here tonight to say a few words about Mr. Tony Horton. Uh, Tony and I initially met during the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year, which was a difficult time. We were uh hybrid, we were wearing masks, we were in and out. And there was a student that I had worked with for a few years who was having a particularly hard time. I got connected with Tony through some colleagues and Tony's first response was, I got you. And he and Detective Slaton, uh, who also plays a large role in the Crimson Foundation came in. We had a great meeting with the young man. Uh, unfortunately, you know, as always, doesn't always go as planned. Uh, but from there, um, what I took from Tony, my first impression was, wow, not only is he handsome, uh, he's incredibly well dressed, but he also has a great hairstyle. So, uh, but i- in all seriousness, uh, his dedication to young people, his kindness and humility, all the messages that he uh, you know, that he imparts to the students that he works with. Uh, over the past two years, Tony and the Crimson Foundation have held mentoring sessions for our students covering a wide variety of topics from um perception versus reality, building connections and networking to personal hygiene and appearance. Uh, there's no doubt you've made a tremendous impact on the students of Wissaken High School. Uh, Tony, from the bottom of my heart, thank you for everything you do for our students and your partnership with the Wissaken. Um, I would like to, thank you, I would like to introduce two uh students who are here who have had firsthand experience working with Mr. Horton. First is a graduate of ours last year, Jules Johnson. And then after that, Chloe Noel, who's a current senior, has a few words that she'd like to say, but thank you, Tony, congratulations.
How are you? Oh, so I'm gonna keep it short because I know there's a whole lot of talking going on. I don't know what y'all got going on after we leave here, but my name's Julian Johnson, call me Jules. Some familiar faces in here, some of you might have heard of me, hopefully all good. Anyway, before I say anything, can I get one more round of applause for my man, Anthony Horton? My man, Mr. Horton. So I met Mr. Horton last year at one of the Guide Right meetings. This is during my senior year in Wissaken High School. Um, we had, we are, we heard about each other already. Dr. Blair, the principal at Wissaken, told me about him, told him about me. So we already trying to figure out, you know, who's this guy, you know? So I came to the Guide Right meeting and from the moment I first met him, from the moment I first met his Kappa team, I felt nothing but love, you know? Uh, their team, they do an excellent job, to say the least, at cultivating all the students, making them feel engaged, you know, uh, loved. He does a lot for Wissaken alone, Wissaken alone. Uh, yeah, talked to him, that first meeting, got to know him a little bit, told me, you know, holler at me again the next time around, next meeting. I went there and this time I got his information down, some of his team members, and we clicked up outside of that. And first of all, shout out to the burritos and tacos, he he hooked me up. Um, we clicked up, him and Mr. Keenan, we went to Plaza Azteca. You know, we just talked about how my school year was going, you know, plans that they had for Wissaken and, you know, all around for Kappa. And he has a lot of things going on, you know? He's a, really, he's, he's unconditionally giving. And any person that has an unconditional trait, that is to be cherished and valued greatly because there is not a lot of people who will give just because they want to, you know? So major props to him for that. I want to thank him for showing me that times can be rough, but with discipline, with calmness and a plan and the right uh group of people around you and the right connections, you could achieve everything. I remember the first time I met Mr. Horton, you know, he said, yo, man, anything you need, talk to Dr. Blair, I got you. You know, so he's always looking out, looking out for me, not just me, but for everybody, Chloe included, you know? Probably a bunch of people in this room, I'm not sure, but yeah. Major shout out to Mr. Horton, congratulations on winning the Major shout out to Mr. Horton, congratulations on winning the 2023 Award, and my guy.
I'm just a little nervous, so don't mind me if I mess up or something. So I did write something like Mr. Kelly, please, for everybody to know. Good evening, everyone. I'm Chloe Noel. I'm honored to be here tonight to say a few words about the impact Mr. Tony has had on me. Mr. Tony has been a mentor and a role model to me. I'm grateful for everything you have taught me. One of the most important things you have taught me is about my perception. You have showed me how important it is to be mindful of how we see ourselves and the world around us. You have also taught me how to challenge negative perceptions and create more positive ones. This lesson has been invaluable to me, my personal life, and it has helped me to be more confident and to build stronger relationships with others. Another important thing you taught me was how to write my resume and how to personalize, personalize? Personalize, personalize, personalize. Yeah. To be, um, what else do I say? Sorry. To show me how to make it specific to what I'm applying for. And you taught me how to highlight my skills and experience in a way that makes it more clear and like unique. Your guidance has been invaluable to me in my job search. I have now more confidence in my ability to write a resume that will get me noticed by potential employers. Mr. Tony, I'm also grateful for your opportunity to be a member of your leadership club. Your club has helped me to develop my leadership skills and to become a more confident and effective leader. Thank you for all that you have done for me and all the other students for Wissaken. Thank you.
So as usual, the best decisions that I ever make are to have students say a few words. So, no one can say it better. Thank you both. That was perfect. And at this point, I'm gonna see if I can get Tony. I got some people in the audience who have ways around him to persuade him to come up and just say a few words. Yeah, it's, it's, he's around people who he knows, and people appreciate him, and we appreciate you, Tony.
Yeah, my man.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Definitely caught me off guard. I appreciate this, and I appreciate the time. There's a lot of work that still needs to be done in Wissaken School District. Let me be clear, and there's a lot of work that needs to be done in a lot of school districts. I wanna thank you, Jim. About six years ago, myself and Chaney Sparks, who is our current Guide Right Chairman for the Abington Ambler Alumni Chapter of Kappa Alpha Psi, we, we came to, we came to Jim and wanted to talk about our Guide Right Program, which is a monthly program that we facilitate at Salem Baptist Church, third Sunday of each month. And the sun, and, and that program is primarily directed towards mentoring minority youth in Eastern Montgomery County, Pennsylvania. And it's for two hours a month, and it's free, third Sunday of each month. And we know that's not enough. I don't care what the kid is, who the kids are, where the kids are located. And we wanted to get more active in our community. And so, we had a new board of directors, we had a new Guide Right staff, and we had a vision. And our vision was to be more embedded in our community, which bears our name, Abington Ambler. And those two communities, we wanted to start first at the high school and work our way down. And our first meeting was with Dr. Chrisville, and it was an awesome meeting that we talked a lot, and there was a lot of stuff going on in the community and beyond. And we can't solve everything, but we wanted to first start with CASA and work our way with the Celebrating All Student Achievement Program, and then work our way through. And where we are today is, we're now in the high school and the middle school. I believe with over thirty plus, maybe forty students total. And that program has become the flagship for what is now at Abington High School, what is now at Abington Middle School, what is at Springfield Township High School and Middle School. And most importantly, as we branch off into Sheltonham and some other districts, because again, we don't get paid, we're volunteers. I'm a Global IT Director at Merkin Company. I'm married, I have two sons, I live in Lansdale, but this is my, our community service area. It's important to us. This community is important to us. And the program, this program has become the flagship with Kaziah and Jim for an area like Pottstown High School and Middle School. If you don't know about Pottstown High School and Middle School, please go. I invite you to come and, and come and mentor with us, because they need us. And this program has become the flagship where it's now emulated elsewhere. And so, yes, we, we've got a lot more work to do. We do what we can with the staff we have, because we don't get paid, it's, we, we do this for free. But what we recognize is that although our Guide Right Program is monthly, and it's primarily focused on minority youth, males in particular, our outreach in the schools is for everybody. And so, we, we don't exclude any child, and we work with the schools to figure out who those potential leaders are and how they need us, how we can mentor them in ways beyond just science, technology, engineering, and math. We talk about core things that the classroom does not educate our kids on, right? Perception, communication, social media impact, body language, right? We do talk around components of financial literacy, things that our math, science, social studies classes do not focus on, because they're not supposed to. Our guidance counselors here do a good job, but we, we can do more, so we're here to supplement. Not everything needs to fall on our staff. So, no, it's not my community, but I graduated from Springfield Township High School. This is my community. It's something I take serious. We can't solve all the problems, but we'll try to solve as much as we can, you know? And so, I appreciate this time. I appreciate you surprising me with this, but this is a reflection of what we started. And it's a program that was nationally recognized by our Grand Chapter of our fraternity, which is a global fraternity. So in other words, it is now recognized because of what it started at Wissaken. It has now become the blueprint, because our fraternity is now going through a strategic plan. I'm on that Strategic Planning Committee for our entire fraternity. That means undergraduate and graduate chapters alike. The blueprint that we started here is now being talked about and emulated globally now. So I thank you. I thank you for this award. I thank you for the time, and I appreciate the continued support. Because what you see and hear with some of the individuals who came here to, to surprise me and support me, we don't have a huge staff. It's hard to get people to come out. Everybody wants to fix the world, but when you say, "Hey, I need you during the day, I can't do this. I need you on the weekend, I can't do this." Well, I have two kids who play ice hockey, and I have one that's in boarding school in Minnesota right now. So, I'm still doing what I can. And it's not enough. It may not be enough to some people, but I'll tell you what, I, I tried my hardest. And the team that's here, they tried their hardest, and we're gonna continue to do what we can. But it started here, and I appreciate the endorsement and the continued support, and we're gonna keep doing what we can, but thank you so much.
I did have some questions I wanted to ask.
Sure, sure. I knew he's a former football player, he would just get that V8 engine going, and he would. So a couple of questions, Tony, if you would, from the, from the board.
First, thank you so much for volunteering your time here with our students in Wissaken. That is just amazing. How many students do we currently have involved in the program?
So, can I invite Chaney Sparks? You know, I know you're filming, but you're a Guide Right Chairman, come on up. Because you are, you are Guide Right Chairman, but in terms of, there's, so there's two. So our outreach at the, at the high school and middle school, I wanna say we're about forty plus. For Wissaken. Okay, so closer to fifty students this year, and we're averaging that per school, I would say. We're right neck and neck with Pottstown. And Abington is, is, is an enormous amount, but we just haven't got the vibe and magic numbers yet. I don't know if you wanna talk about our Guide Right Program, just in terms of the numbers for, for the overall program.
So, overall program is approximately fifty, counting all the schools that we're currently dealing with in Denver. Program in the weekend, so approximately fifty.
But hearing Wissaken about fifty students, and how often do you, I need to, once, every month for the one?
So the frequency of the program, it's very aggressive. I'm gonna say we're about every other week, so every, yeah, at least twice a month.
And how many volunteers?
So we have a staff right now dedicated, probably six to eight. I would say we probably average about five of our, our staff. And we're also connected to, well, now it's Governor Shapiro, but the Pennsylvania State Trooper Equity and Inclusion Office underneath Lieutenant Slate. So we also have a police division that also comes in, because, look, to be honest, we had some questions and concerns from our community, our students, around police brutality, and who, what better way to answer those questions than officers and state troopers of color, right? And, and, and so, they help out when they can, and they have, they, they also come and do additional mentoring with us. Sure. So I've got past President of Abington Alumni Chapter, Alan Parker Jr. I have current President, current President of Abington Alumni Chapter, Keenan Washington. And most importantly, I have his wife here, Mia Washington, who was a valuable component of the program, because we do have in the schools a large female contingency. And so, she was instrumental, just not in just our programming, but also addressing some, some major issues for some of our students in particular, you know, at Pottstown and others, and so I can't thank you enough. We reckon, we recognized Mia last year because of her tireless dedication and effort to, to making this program a success, so. Sorry to take a lot of time.
No, no, this is, I, I'm so interested in this program. This sounds so wonderful. And how could individuals in our community get involved in volunteering? Is there a website they could go to to sign up?
Yes, there is. The Crimson Foundation has a website, and it's crimsonfoundation.org.
With a K.
With a K, oh yeah. And then for the overall Guide Right Program, there is a website, AAAKappaGuideRight, one word, dot org.
Great. It'd be great if we could encourage some more members of our community to get involved in volunteering. This sounds like such a wonderful program, so thank you so much for all you do.
Thank you.
And my last question, I'm sorry, I know we're moving over here. I just was wondering how Jim surprised you, like, how did he get you here? What did he tell you?
I'm sorry, that's classified. We have more years of this, so I'm not giving away my secrets.
Alright, sounds good. Alright, anyone else have any comments or questions? Oh yeah, go ahead, Paul.
So, just a quick comment. First of all, full disclosure, I happen to be a member of Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity, and previously worked very closely with the, the Guide Right Committee in Norristown Alumni Chapter. But even if that weren't the case, I could not be more proud of the time and effort that they put into this program. Again, not just here at Wissaken, where they've made a tremendous impact, but throughout this region. And that can't be understated. At a time when I believe this type of work is needed most, they are achieving in every form, and I'm just so proud of these guys. Several of them I've had the opportunity to work with, I happen to know Tony's father as well, worked with, excuse me, worked with him. And I'm just very proud of all the work that they've done, and wish you continued success, and we appreciate you sacrificing your time to be here with us and to put the work in in our district, as well as all the other districts that you're working with. So thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Do you guys wanna just, hold on? There's water for you. We're good.
And you're all welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but you're also free to go. It's gonna be a little bit of a lengthy meeting, so. You're, you're free to stay though. If you're leaving, make sure you get some goodies on the way out. We'll give you all a minute. Thank you. I think we've heard of that program, it was amazing. Alright, so we're gonna move on to our next presentation, which is number one of two SCL updates.
One of two of every year, or so.
Oh, okay, got it. Okay, so our first one. Alright, thanks for that. Thank you.
So, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present the Cell Quarterly Update. Joining me this evening is Dr. Jason Biaka, who is the Acting Co-Chair of our Cell Steering Committee. So I always like to begin our quarterly updates with our district vision. Again, as we focus on that, it is really aspiring to create a learning community where all students and staff feel a sense of belonging and are inspired to engage and excel to their fullest potential. As we look at the evidence-based practices of social emotional learning, we know that the more positive social behaviors that students exhibit, the greater the academic success. And so as we focus on our vision of creating a space of belonging, inspiration, engagement, and excellence, we wanna also make sure that we continue to focus on the social and emotional learning of our students. So looking at our list of our Cell Steering Committee, this is our twenty-three, twenty-four list, and it is one comprised of over thirty members. It includes professional and support staff from the building level, as well as central office. And the Cell Steering Committee is one committee that is very actionable in its plans to help us ensure that we are focusing on social emotional learning across the district. For your reference, when we're talking about our social emotional learning competencies or the skills that we're looking for our students to learn, we're starting with that level of self-awareness, social awareness, going through self-management, building the relationship skills, responsible decision-making, which are all composites of what we see in our secondary mentorship program that we just talked about in terms of that Guide Right Secondary Mentorship Program that exists at both the middle school and high school. Here are our twenty-three, twenty-four district-wide cell themes that we're focusing on for this school year. We started off September with belongingness and went into October with WIS Pride. And at this time, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Dr. Biaka, who will highlight what we're doing in charge of the district-wide cell themes at the elementary school buildings.
Thank you. So, as Ms. Latour said, that our focus as we started this school year has really been around the idea of community building. And it's important that we're recognizing each of our students for who they are, what they bring to us as individuals, but also helping them to realize that they are a part of the greater Wissaken community. So how do we do that? Really, in a, a variety of ways. In our schools, you would see whole school-wide assemblies or activities. You'll see grade-level activities, you'll see classroom-level activities that are occurring around this work. And each and every day, every elementary school has a morning meeting period where the first fifteen minutes of the day, well, after the ten minutes where they're eating breakfast, the next fifteen minutes of the day is focused in on morning meeting, which is really a time that we prioritize the well-being of the kids. It's a time to check in with them, to make sure that we see them for who they are as people before we dive into the academic portion of the day. So that's every day at school, and it's a nice way to focus in on what's most important, where they're at, before we tackle the rest of the academic day. So as we go through here, I'm just gonna highlight each elementary school and one activity that they did this year. And so just the higher, so far this year, in the first month, two months of school. So at Blue Bell Elementary School, the photo all the way to the right, the students are participating in something that's called Dot Day. And September fifteenth is International Dot Day, and it was really started around a book called The Dot, where the object, the, the, the book, the the objective of the book is a student starts an art project, and they're really down on themselves, feeling they can't trust their own abilities in art, and they're inspired by an art teacher to start by just drawing a dot. And um, the idea is through creativity and expression and individualism, by having those things, you, you really can't go wrong. And the student's able to see that by the end of the book. So at Blue Bell, the kids all had a dot day where they created their own dots, wore their own dots, celebrating who they were as individuals. They all read the book across the entire school. They sang a song related to dots. They did activities related to dots. But it's just a way to celebrate who they are as individuals and then bring themselves together uh, as a community. It's nervous first click. I want to make sure it works. Moving on to Lower Gwinnett Elementary School, there's a bunch of pictures here, and I wanted to highlight um, really the one in the top right-hand corner there. So at, at Lower Gwinnett, third-grade classroom, read the book Mean Gene, The Recession Queen. As you can imagine, Mean Gene, The Recession Queen doesn't make very good decisions at recess. I know, hard to imagine. Um, so what the students talked about were scenarios that happen at recess, problematic scenarios, scenarios that could be troublesome, and how to work through those scenarios. And really what the discussion was focused in on is what can I do to be a good friend? What does that look like um, in these scenarios? What does that feel like? And by the end of the week, the students did a STEM activity where they created their own playgrounds. Uh, they used um, paper towel rolls, cardboard, created their own playgrounds, and then they used gummy bears as little students to set up um, ways to show safe and healthy interactions at recess. Gummy bears are sugar-free, so there's that'll be part of that. I'm just kidding. I don't know if they were sugar-free. Um, at Shady Grove, one of the things that we've done, and all the schools do this, is we have buddy activities. So you have a grade level, in this case, in this picture is the, on the left and, and the center there. This is fourth and first grade students coming together. And each of the grade levels, they kind of have a class partnership, and they have a student that they work with. So that's a fourth-grade student and a first-grade student getting together there in that top left-hand corner. And they do get to know your activities and team-building activities all throughout the year. So this is just in the first month here. Uh, in that photo, they're working on a book together, all about my buddy, where they had to create their own books about one another. Um, our fourth grader has to help our first grader with some of the writing and the spelling. Um, but then after that, they did STEM uh, activities where they had to collaborate together, fourth and first-grade buddies together to, to create. And then it's capped off in the middle picture there. Um, that's uh, at the end of the week, they had just um, fun and competitive games where they got to cheer one another along in the gymnasium. In all elementary school, this, the buddy programs, um, great way to bring community across the grade levels. And finally, Stony Creek Elementary School, I'm going to highlight the, the top left-hand corner up there. So each Friday at Stony Creek was Find a Friend Friday. So the purpose with that was you would bring two classes together, and they would do something to find a friend outside of their classroom and outside of their grade level. So in the top left-hand picture, you've got fifth and second grade students getting together, and then, you know, working with kind of like a buddy, but with the purpose of really expanding friendships. And so they interviewed one another, learned about their um, favorite activities, colors, foods. Um, and now they'll have that connection going forward with somebody that's outside of their grade level. So um, each day, we're constantly doing something with the focus on community building, who we are as individuals, and also bringing us together as, as a larger community. And we'll continue to, even though belongingness is our focus this September, that's really our focus all year long, and we'll continue to do that. So I will reintroduce Ms. Latour, who will speak about the middle school and high school.
Thank you, Dr. Biaka. So at the middle school, we had the opportunity to have our first annual Student Voice Day. Um, that took place on October twenty-fifth, and it's where the high, uh, the middle school was able to hold um, an opportunity for students to really look at the three Rs of respect, responsibility, and relationships. The event provided a diverse group of fifty middle school students with supporting staff the opportunity to experience team-building activities as well as meaningful dialogue around the goals of the school community. Further, the students and staff will continue these discussions with the hopes of creating an action plan that focuses on their learning from this day. The T-shirts that you see um, that are featured, the student T-shirt and the staff T-shirt, is a part of what's called Positivity Tuesdays. And on Tuesdays, staff and students are encouraged to wear shirts that include a positive message. Positive messages serve as good reminders for everyone in the building. And throughout the day, students who are participating in the Positivity Tuesdays are recognized with small prizes. At the high school, um, each month, staff will be focusing on a different cell skill with students. Uh, these skills foster on connection, celebrate individuality, promote a collective community, and highlight the importance of relationships. Each homeroom will also have an opportunity to decorate their W for WIS Pride. They will be able to incorporate things that they're proud of at Wissahickin High School. In terms of our ninth grade, um, we have that picture there in the left corner with thumbs up. This is a photograph of those students in freshman seminar who worked in teams to think outside the box, to analyze the puzzles and develop ideas and solutions. As we focus on social emotional learning competencies, the productive struggle, the collaboration, the analysis are all part of that. In pink, we have our WIS Link group. And so what was really wonderful was that our freshman class was welcomed by our WIS Link leaders during freshman orientation. The leaders organized team-building activities to help ninth graders learn the ins and outs of the high school. The leaders serve as a resource for freshmen all year, and their motto is, "We're here when you need us." Building Bridges Event, I want to highlight this event that took place on October seventeenth. This evening session provided an opportunity for students, caregivers, and police to engage in a conversation about difference. But it's also about our, our opportunity to continue to talk about belonging. And so participants were able to share their lived experiences. They responded to guiding prompts for the purpose of developing empathy and perspective-taking. This is one session, and we're looking forward to additional sessions going forward. This was in partnership with others from assure America, and so we're looking forward to continuing the conversation. Student Support Teachers, SST Team, these are our teachers on special assignments, so our TOSs. Um, they are doing a fabulous job at each individual building to center students' behavioral, academic, social, and emotional strengths and needs. And so when we're focusing on cell in the classroom, and we're looking at our student success, be that socially, emotionally, or academically, we have our student support teachers in place to provide the additional support that's needed for every student. Centered in this picture, also in the background with the glasses on, very back, is Mr. Mike Mandel, who is our Instructional Coach of Restorative Practices. I wanted to highlight him and his role as well, because in terms of social emotional learning, he provides instructional support to staff using cell in the classroom across discipline. Any questions for us?
Well, thank you so much for that presentation. I love the themes for this year and the activities that you shared with us. So wonderful. And my kids came home, my kids are at Stony Creek, and they like loved meeting a buddy from another grade. And my youngest is in kindergarten, and it was just like so nice for her to get to know like some of the older kids in the building. So it was really nice.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And the SST, so Ms. Biaka, how do you feel at your school, having that assistance?
I don't know if you saw me like smiling and nodding as, as Ms. Latour was uh, presenting. Um, they've been, and I, I, so I know every single SST up there. Um, and I know I could speak for the principals as they did, they're invaluable. Um, just the support that they're giving for students. You know, as, as our population continues to grow here, and we want to be there for, for each and every kid, having another person there that can help navigate sometimes what could be a trickier situation, um, that can't always be handled by a classroom teacher, having uh, another person there that can help navigate those conversations. That, I mean, it's, it's invaluable. It really is. So um, in, in addition, um, it's, that's all I'll say. Like, it's, it's been, it's been great.
Well, I've heard positive feedback from all the schools about this program, having the SSTs this year. So I'm, I'm glad to hear your perspective on this as well. Thank you. Other board members, comments, questions?
I just have a quick question. Thank you so much for the presentation. I'm, I'm wondering to, I'm curious about any feedback from teachers and staff regarding the restorative practice training.
So the feedback that I've received regarding restorative practices in terms of the training has been very positive. Um, you know, we are continuing, this is our third year of restorative practice training. Um, we are building the internal capacity. What is so important is when we're looking at our Instructional Coach of Restorative Practices, having someone who is proximal to teachers in the classroom when they need that immediate support or guidance or a thought partner is invaluable. And so as we begin to, you know, have this conversation of making sure that we're not only providing the training for professional staff, but our support staff, it is always an opportunity to also make sure that there is clarity and communication about restorative practices. Clarity in what that means in terms of where it sits with our code of student conduct. And so we are fostering that and cultivating clear communication around the language that we're using, the approaches that we're using. Um, if we look at restorative practices, it is important for all to know that eighty percent of restorative practices is a proactive. It's building community, it's building relationships, and it's having those affective statements and affective questions in place. And so really helping to support teachers to understand that. The twenty percent is the reactive. It's the one that we're looking at when we're trying to repair harm that has been caused and so forth. And so in terms of those who are experiencing the training and also receiving the direct support of an instructional coach, it's been very positive.
I, I want to share as well, I, I can't even fill all the staff that want to attend because there's, you know, they're going to be out on a half-day, um, and, and I can't get subs for all of them at the same time. So we've come up with a schedule to do that, but the interest is extremely high uh, for the people that want that learning and, and want to attend that. And, and the feedback, and that's because the feedback from their colleagues has been, um, you, you've got to go to this, like, you, you want to be a part of this. So, you know, we, we try, I think I sent seven people from Shady Grove the other day to the training. But um, very, very high interest, and we're using a lot of turnkey then approaches for our staff to come back and talk with other staff about it as well. But very high interest in, in positive feedback.
That, that's wonderful. Thank you so much.
I have one, one, thank you for your presentation. Um, a lot of great information. Love the positive kind of uh, energy that's around it. Your learning competencies are like big items. And thank you for, for like being that bold to kind of move in that direction. Has there been any thought or idea about, you know, sharing out that information more broadly to families, to caregivers? Uh, just so that we're also creating kind of um, you know, commonplace themes or commonplace ways to speak about the things across the board? Because, you know, I mean, self-awareness, I mean, I know adults who don't, don't have that skillset. So like, the, these are really big things you guys are trying to achieve, which kudos. I mean, that's awesome. But I, I feel like there might be uh, an opportunity here. And maybe not today, but maybe like that's something we can maybe think about evolving to.
Thank you for that. Um, one thing we have been discussing is the home extension. How do we establish common language, common practices at home? And so making sure that we're communicating what we're doing in the school is one thing, but also inviting parents and guardians in as partners to leverage their insights, their strengths, and to also share with them what we're doing, so we can know what it would look like at home in practice. So that partnership is something we've been actively talking about along the lines too with PBIS, our Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports.
And I just to add, um, in terms of like sharing with the community. So last year at one of our HSA meetings at Shady Grove, and this is specific to Shady, um, we did have our school counselors present on SEL. And the competencies here are from a national organization, CASL. And, and that's kind of the guiding, to help define what that means. So many people hear SEL, cell, and, and there's social emotional learning. What does that mean? So we helped, you know, parents through that general membership meeting to kind of unpack what each of those, you know, components is. Cause you're right, there's, there's a lot there.
And we're always looking for community presentations. I think this would be great. Like, if you were able to do it at an HSA meeting, be able to do a broader presentation to the community for more families to attend, I think that would be wonderful. Uh, thank you. Any other questions? I have seen that. Thank you again for the presentation.
Thank you.
All right. Presentation number five, Hispanic Heritage Month Recognition. I, I think you're on again. Next presentation.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to share how we've observed National Hispanic Heritage Month. And so as we look here, um, this is Blue Bell Elementary. Students learned what the word heritage means and why we celebrate different heritage. So providing that common language and common understanding was essential. We had some of our fifth graders from Blue Bell research Hispanic and Latin A countries, and then created a poster with facts about the country and included an image of the flag. In doing so, they also provided an opportunity for a gallery walk where peers could see what others have done to learn about the various countries highlighted. We also had an opportunity to have book displays in the library. Um, they were used in various lessons, again, to highlight Hispanic and Latin A literature. In addition to the books, there were also programs that students had available for them, such as Pebble Go, to also do more reading um, in their research on Hispanic and Latin A countries. At Lower Gwinnett Elementary, um, the library lobby had an opportunity to display case of decorated and influential Hispanic and Latin A Americans. Children's books featuring Hispanic and Latin A people and characters were put in the display case and provided an opportunity for students to really observe and learn a lot that was available through those classroom lessons as well. There was also opportunities through various classes to do research and present on influential Hispanic and Latin A Americans. Shady Grove Elementary, at Shady Grove, um, there was the opportunity for students to explore Hispanic and Latin A cultures and contributions. These were featured through various classroom activities and celebrations that took place. The main hallway at Shady Grove displayed the many countries recognized, which is picture two. We also had one of our Shady Grove School counselors teach all of our students some phrases in Spanish that they were able to speak to celebrate and support one another. And then our fifth graders learned about prominent Hispanic figures and Latin A figures, including contemporary artists. After learning about their lives, the students emulated the artwork and the style to create their own masterpieces. Stony Creek Elementary, third graders researched famous Hispanic and Latin A individuals and created a collaborative poster as a class. Fourth graders had the opportunity to research and present on influential Hispanic and Latin A individuals. First graders had the treat of having a parent come in to share their culture and experiences, being from Ecuador. And second grade classes utilized scholastic resources and participated in a virtual presentation where Hispanic and Latin A authors read excerpts from their books and answered student questions. Wissahickin Middle School, in eighth grade, during English Language Arts classes, students read The House on Mango Street by Sandra Cisneros. Inspired by the symbolism of the text, students constructed symbolic houses of their own, which helped to show who they are and from where they come. In ESL, our English as a Second Language course, students created bulletin boards recognizing the contributions made and the important presence of Hispanic and Latin A Americans in the United States. At the high school, we heard earlier about the fun things that were had. Um, the new Hispanic and Latin A Association, HLA, at the high school hosted a Hispanic Heritage Month celebration on Tuesday, October tenth, after school in our square gym. The celebration hosted a live mariachi band. It had catered food, opportunities for piñatas and dancing, and some game playing. Students also learned a great deal about culture and celebration during their time at this event. WIS Bedtime Stories, um, we do have a collection of bedtime stories that are currently cataloged on our webpage for access in Recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month. For anyone who's interested in accessing a bedtime story, you'll see that they're featured here. We have our own Shady Grove School Counselor, Mrs. Rebecca Tweeford, shared here a story. And then, of course, I'm featured there, reading my story Mango, Abuela, and Me, um, that is cataloged. Thank you so very much for this opportunity to share what we've done during National Hispanic Heritage Month. And one note that I will leave you with is that although- Although we are recognizing and celebrating during September fifteenth to October fifteenth. The goal and hope and aspiration is always to make sure throughout the course of the year, throughout the curriculum. That there is the lifting up of the influential contribution of Hispanic and Latin, Latin people. That we want to celebrate in the United States. Alright, thank you so much.
Thank you for that presentation.
You're welcome.
I was so excited when I saw the presentation, my daughter was in the Stony Creek slide.
Oh, excellent.
She loved that, all the things they did this month. It was, it was amazing.
Great feedback. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Alright, so our last presentation is on school start and end times. Jim, is this yours?
Alright, we're gonna see if the superintendent can operate advanced technology with a little. There we go, okay. Alright, um, tonight we have the first of what are gonna be four detailed presentations on, uh, the. Uh, board goals been in place for three years. Which is to investigate the opportunities for possible later school start and end times. And we heard tonight from an expert on, uh, from the, the Wake Up and Learn Foundation about, uh, how sleep matters and. And so, uh, this time last year, we came to the realization, as you recall, that we could use a few more details. Or decision makers could use some details as to what it would actually look like before you made a decision. I think that made a lot of sense. So what we're gonna do here and the next three board meetings afterwards are to share those details. Uh, so these are the upcoming dates and topics. We started with tonight, we had, um. Uh, Dr. Morse right there and off we go to, um, other speakers, other topics tonight is this, is the actual. Times and schedule details, busing later next week or next meeting rather, after school activities, athletics, so forth. And then we'll have, well, they'll take us down through December. With the specific topics there with speakers as well. And then, um, in January, we'll have an opportunity to review and and sort of look at the, uh, the overall picture of what it would look like in a comprehensive fashion. Leading up to the board vote in February. This, this slide should be, uh, of no surprise to anybody, we, this is our current start times. And just some logistics that as you, those you who have been through it know, middle and high schools start roughly the same time, a little bit. Uh, offset so that we can get buses across the street, literally. And also it's important to remember that elementary schools too started at five minutes later than the other two. That's just, just for busing purposes. That those, um, here in the bottom left here, these highlighted. Let's keep that in mind. We have about five thousand students and we're about twenty-five square miles. Now, by the way, if this is too small to see, we'll post all this on the website with, uh, anything you ever wanted to know about school start times and sleep research and more. But I I put up here to, uh, for purposes of comparison. The other districts that have, uh, start times at eight thirty AM for high school. Okay, so there was, this time last year, we were thinking about what about eight AM, what about eight thirty? Eight AM options are off the table now and we're only talking about high school at eight thirty. So we have Radnor School District, top left. As our high school started eight thirty and they have triple tiering, so that's a term. Uh, familiar with, that means that the, that refers to busing. And each of the three levels, middle, high and elementary, have their own tier, therefore triple tiering. And again, pay, pay attention to this, they have a few, uh, they have fewer students we do, it's not so important. The square miles difference is very important. State College, not too close by, but they do start at eight thirty, actually even started at forty. And they have a whole different operation, they're way, way bigger than us geographically. Um, and they have double tiering, as you see. Lower Marion, um. Last June committed to later school start times, uh, to start in this coming, or September twenty-four. But they're gonna, the times you see there on that chart are gonna have to be adjusted slightly because since June, they've realized they actually can't make those times work. Bussing wise, so they're, they're trying some things and I'll, I'll update this as the, as we get that information. But they, interestingly enough, have about the same, almost exactly the same square miles as we do, standing here. And then there's our same current times and we currently have double tiering busing. Lower Marion suggesting going to triple tiering. Now, one of the keys to all of this is the amount of time between tiers. So you'll note that Radnor up here with fourteen square miles to cover has less time between their tiers. That's, that's thirty minutes and we've got thirty, or sorry, let me. Um, that's a total of thirty in between all their tiers. Uh, Lower Marion was thinking they could do it in forty and thirty, and I think that last one is where they're finding the hiccup. I think they're finding that to, to cover twenty-four square miles in thirty minutes between the, the, the tiers is just not possible. And one of the things we want to be clear about is when we present the plan, and tonight we're gonna share with you the times, next meeting will be the busing details. But we want to be able to say to you, this is what we can do. And I think Lower Marion just kind of stepped in a little bit because they, they said they would like these times, but they actually can't do them. Given their, their geographic distance, but maybe they have a solution and they're working on it now.
Jim, do you have questions during the presentation or at the end?
Um, I think either, whatever you prefer.
I just had a question about this. So far as the busing, so. Lower Marion has about thirty-seven hundred more students than us. In about, almost the same amount of square miles. Do we know how many buses they have going out to cover that twenty-four square mile period?
We will be sure to include that in next week's presentation on busing. That's a really good question. I can tell you they have two high schools, which alleviates things substantially.
Okay, yeah, and if we could also look at how many buses we have also.
Yes, and, uh, what we'll do next time with busing is look at the difference between the double tiering. Um, logistics of busing and a triple tier. Okay, so option number one under consideration, this is option one, it's keeping the double tiering structure we have now. Which means six to twelve together in our case. So this option would have the high school, we would achieve the goal of having the high school start at eight thirty. In this case, middle school would start five minutes earlier. And then. At the end of the day, they flip slightly and we'll explain that in a second. But I want to draw your attention to this yellow part because this is how we're able to accomplish this. The high school's day is going from six hours and fifty-eight minutes. That the, uh, materials in red are what is, exists now. Six fifty-eight to six forty. So we're shaving eighteen minutes off the school day, the student day. For high school students. And we're explaining in a second what that looks like and how we did that. The other school day stayed the same duration. And so the only way we could get double tiering to work with an eight thirty start time is to do that. And you see that therefore the elementaries will start at nine twenty and go to four. Which is either fifty or forty-five minutes later than they go now. And you'll note that we have here. Either a fifty or forty-five minute span between the bus run. We, we can't do it any faster. So we can't compress this anymore. Um, just some notes, I'd note there that, that Radnor is, is got that slower, smaller geographic size, so that's one of the reasons for the difference. Um, the good news about double tiering, option one, is the middle school students also, uh, get the benefits of the sleep. Start times later, which we know is a thing. The downside is we're gonna have some trouble getting our North Monaco Tech School students to tech. And our non-public students picked up and delivered to school. So we're gonna have to add buses to the mix to do those things, which Wade will, uh, and I will share next time. Option two moves us to a triple tiering construct. Remember, we're double tiering now, so this would be a pretty big change, but it has some interesting advantages. As well as costs, and I mean cost literally. So option two, we could start the middle school at the exact same time it does now. And, and the same time, so basically no change of the middle school. That will give us enough time to get the buses back through the community to, for a high school start time at eight thirty, which you see here. They would end at three ten again, so again, we're shaving eighteen minutes off the school day for students. And we'll share what that looks like in a second. And then that would give us enough time for a nine fifteen start at elementary, which means they get out to fifty-five. Same duration of day for elementary, six forty, same duration of day for middle, six fifty. Now, this option, and again, we're gonna share this out later, but this gives us an advantage because we have buses going through the community in that early tier. To capture our, our North Monaco kids and their non pubs. And more efficiently deliver them to where they need to go. So that's an advantage. Also, this is gonna be nice because those, we're all familiar with the traffic snarl on Houston Road in the mornings, afternoons too. And if we split middle and high school into two different tiers, that was gonna help a lot. But I see that as actually a really nice advantage of this option. It's gonna cost more though, because we're gonna need more buses. A few more and we'll get into all that next, next meeting as to the cost and what the busing looks like. But, uh, I just want to keep us to keep in mind the traffic impact of triple tiering is, is a nice side benefit. Okay, so what does the student day change? What you're about to see, I know, like, listen, they're, they're holding their breath over there, only one of you, it's because it's only gonna affect one of you. Um, uh, the student day, what you're gonna see is gonna be, I'm gonna preface this as. Slightly confusing, very colorful, and let's not get bogged down in the details. Let's go big picture on this. Okay, otherwise, we're gonna be here even later than we already are. So as we mentioned, it's fifteen minutes or eighteen minutes total from fifty-eight to forty. Okay, we now have rotating drop. Which our students can explain to anyone else, but that just means that the, the, every day, not only does a class get dropped, but the order of the other ones changes. When you become, when in a high school environment, you get, like, you know this like the back of your hand, um, outside of the environment. I mean, I get, I don't have to eat lunch anymore at ten forty-two like I did for five years. So you can't have the same class at any one point every day. You can't fix classes, which is a, which is a key hurdle for us. We're not suggesting we change the nature of the student day, the rotating drop piece at this time. So here's how we're capturing eighteen minutes, and I'm gonna give you a graphic of it in a second, compressing homeroom. Relocating morning announcements and then in consolidating, we have space. That's how we're getting our eighteen. We are not reducing instructional time. That's really key. That was one of our goals going into this. And we're also not changing the passing time because it would be unrealistic of us to say. Well, we're shaving a minute off of passing. I can guarantee you what will happen. Kids won't get there in time. They barely get there in time now. I see a smile corroborating that. I'm sure you both do all the time. Thank you. Thank you for that affirmation. So here comes the graphic, brace yourselves. Okay. Those of you who are in the high school environment know what I'm talking about. They have six days in their schedule. Days one to four. Are the same construct, the days five and six are different. Five and six are, are intended to provide for some longer lab periods. So first, we're talking about days one to four. This is what it currently looks like. We currently start school at seven thirty-seven. Right here, and we go all the way down to two thirty-five for the end of school. What it could look like proposed wise is. Essentially, get, um, delete the second we have space at the end of the day. Combine homeroom with the current we have space. And that gets us eighteen minutes. So we start at eight thirty, start the day when we have space, morning announcements, go through the sessions. Yes, I'll say it before someone else does, yes, the late lunch is at one forty. And then out at three ten. Those would be days one to four. And then five and six, looks like this currently. And you see the periods are longer because they're, uh, often used for labs, especially in the sciences. And the proposed would be something similar, we would, we would, um. Remove the second we have space, we would combine homeroom, uh, with session one and in that session three. Yeah, IE would no longer also be homeroom and office hours, it would be just the off, off, IE office hours. That's how, and those, that adds up to eighteen minutes of saving. Excellent, and technically there's one less passing time in this right one, but. Again, we don't need to get into details. Eighteen minutes is the point. Staff workday. This is the current situation, uh, at, at middle and high and elementary and, um. It's important to note that right now, per the negotiated union contract, staff workday is seven hours and thirty minutes. That's the same at all three levels. It's slightly different how that's, um, accomplished in a given day. In the secondary levels, you see, uh, more of that. Before and after student time is in the afternoon after school, so students can access teachers for extra help and questions. In the elementary, it's more in the morning. Because we actually use that really invaluable time for professional development and meetings. And they don't really act, need to access our teachers so much for extra help in elementary level. So that's the way it looks now. In option one, it would be the same seven hours and thirty minutes, it would just shift slightly. And especially at the high school level, you'll note that we have eighteen more minutes to do something with. Since the student day will be eighteen minutes less. So those additional eighteen minutes are all being front loaded in the beginning of the day. So at middle, the teacher would still be, um, after school, after students leave for thirty minutes, the high school twenty-five, and elementary ten. Ten is barely, actually all these numbers, but ten is barely enough to cover the supervision needs after school. We really can't squeeze these later. We can't get teachers out that much earlier. And if we like make it even twenty and twenty, then you really miss out on opportunities for meetings. You gotta have one or the other a little bit longer. So you have some time for meetings and, and, uh, uh, collaboration. And a triple tiering, same concepts, still seven hours and thirty minutes. Still front loading the additional bound minutes at high school to the beginning of the day. And then you see what the staff day is, basically the same in either tier except for middle. Okay, so to conclude, uh, both of these are at eight thirty. There are no other options being considered for anything else. All the research is centered on eight thirty. And there's substantial amount of evidence that shows that eight thirty start time for high school is positive, very, very good for students. It's just that communities have to weigh. What it costs, either literally or opportunity wise. And we're doing it with eighteen minutes, no change to the day, middle or elementary. We're gonna do more things coming up. Next one is busing, as we mentioned. All of these are being recorded so that if you, uh, aren't able to join a particular board meeting, everyone can always access it. Uh, on YouTube, via the website. And speaking of the website, we have a, a wealth of information. Including what will be updated FAQs and a feedback form. So there's lots of opportunities in the next several months to provide feedback. Either at a board meeting physically, virtually. Or via the, uh, website's forum. It's much better to do that, this isn't a plea from the superintendent to help his inbox. But it's much easier to do that on the form on the website because then we can be sure we capture. I, I do read emails and, and as you know, I usually reply as best I can. But to better capture the feedback in a place where everyone's gonna see it. It's these, it's these other options would be much better. Well, that's it.
Thank you, Jim, and I'm, I'm glad to actually see the information coming out. I feel like last year when it came to a vote, we didn't have this type of information. So this is really helpful and I think it'll be helpful for the community also in understanding what. We actually are looking to do if we, if we go in that direction. So thank you. Um, other board members with comments or questions? Yeah, Joe.
Jim, um, with the two, uh, uh, busing options, and I, I don't know if we'll talk about this maybe in more detail at the next meeting, but. Between the two options, uh, is there, is there one that's like a recommended option based on the analysis of the team that's been looking at this?
Yeah, we will get into the, the details of the busing. Um. I don't know if there'd be one recommended over the other. I think what we're gonna try to do is, is spell out as best we can what it would actually look like at either two or three levels. Um, I am actually very interested in this, this, the one, the triple tiering that alleviates the tra, or excuse me. Helps the traffic. So because by the way, as we grow, which we are, we're, it's only going to get worse. So doing something short of widening the roads or making individual turnout lanes, which is a ton of money and time. Maybe that one will, would be a, if, if the two are equal, maybe that one would be, be a, you know, push it over to recommendation, but I know those of, those of you who don't have to deal with Houston yet, don't know what we're talking about, but you'll get there.
And Jim, just, just to follow up on your comments. It, it kind of amazes me that when I started on the board back in twenty fifteen to where we are now in terms of student enrollment, the district has grown by, in the neighborhood of eight hundred plus students on the years that I've been on the board. So that tremendous growth is, is a positive in terms of us being a thriving school district, but it also presents challenges in terms of capacity and traffic and things like that that we have to plan for. Thanks.
I actually wanted to ask, I'm sorry, our student reps, you saw the different schedules. What are your thoughts on those?
It's, that's a beast. That's definitely tough. I think like Dr. Chrisfield said, it's definitely not a one size fits all. There's a lot of students that work to support their families and especially even teachers with kids that maybe are seeing kids with single parents who have to transport siblings. So there's, there's a lot of unique situations and it's not going to help, not going to be helpful to everyone. It's going to be like jumping in a cold pool. It's going to be, we, we don't like change. It's going to be interesting to see, but as far as my experience goes, I think I'm impartial. I have a lot, I mean, I, I and Gavin too, we have a lot going on outside of school, so I could see how maybe sleeping in would be a little nice, but then again, I have less time in my afternoon to make up that work, right? So maybe I end up going to bed a little bit later to fit everything in. So I don't know how black and white it really is, but as far as my experience, I think I'm happy how it is now, but I'm open to opportunity.
Yeah, I think I have a few qualms with the, the, how late maybe it's ending, um, three ten? Cause like I, I posed this question to my French class because I wanted to get out of an assignment, but also because I thought it was very important. And many people were saying, well, I work at three and I, I used to work at three as well every single day. So that part, like working to support your family is very hard when the day is extended. And a lot, not as many jobs are going to be as accommodating for that. So I think that's my issue. And then of course, like childcare and stuff like that, although I'm going to be leaving. So it's not really affecting me, but it's, I still think it's going to affect a lot of other people. And like for me currently, the circumstances that like, you know, or obstacles kind of outweigh like the benefits. And I do think like sleep is very, very important, but also there are so many other environmental factors that go in.
And let me just ask you, the way we've consolidated, we have space, morning announcements, homeroom. I mean, you live this every day. How do you feel about that change, like combining everything into one? Do you think it's enough time for those things?
Um, yeah, I think with morning, morning, we have space. I think that's fine, like consolidating it into homeroom and we have space. I think it's basically went in the same for me at least, like with the videos, like a lot of teachers go their like own way with we have space anyway. So like homeroom is kind of, you know, we have, ends up being we have space. Anyway, so I think that part's fine. Afternoon, we have space being taken away. Honestly, I think certain students like may have an issue with that because that's where we use like our decompressing time. Like after like a long grueling class of calculus, I really do like having we have space after to talk to my peers and stuff like that. So I do think in my opinion, like a lot of people think the afternoon we have space is more valuable than the morning. And I actually did a, a AP research project on this. It was like a tiny sample, but we did like look at which we have space will valued, if any, and we saw that afternoon we have space was the one they valued more for many different reasons, but yeah.
I agree with that entirely. I think the morning we have space is not as consequential as the afternoon. A lot of students that work as back to back as maybe Gavin or I do don't, that's our only breathing time maybe in the whole day. I don't know if either of, any of you guys have seen the hallways of Wissahickin during, between periods or at the end of the day, but it is it's shoulder to shoulder in there. It's definitely, it's a little stressful. So even a bigger guy like myself, I'm like walking through the hallways like this, just trying to get out the door. I think that's a great time. Unfortunately, sometimes we, classes end up rolling right through it or through most of it, but when we do have those six minutes, there's certainly a noticeable difference in our day.
Great. It's important to hear your feedback. So thank you so much, both of you. Down here, I think Zephy or Deanne, did one of you have a comment a few minutes ago or questions?
I was just going to piggyback off what Joe is saying is that we haven't seen our largest classes come up to middle school and high school yet. So that's even more interesting with the traffic. That, that's one of my concerns. You know, the class of thirty two has nearly, right now, nearly five hundred students in it, four seventy, I think. When they get to middle school and high school, that's all that more traffic coming in. I don't know. A little concerning from what I've heard already from parents. But I value what you guys say a lot, obviously, very much. So thank you so much for your feedback.
So I, I just had one follow up question. With this revised schedule, how, like, did we get input from various stakeholders with this proposed schedule? Like I think what Gavin just pointed out was very insightful. Like having, you know, we have space at the end of the day might be more meaningful than at the beginning of the day. So like, have we incorporated enough feedback from the various stakeholders?
We attempted to. As you can see, as you might imagine, manipulating the schedule is a three dimension chess game. So I, I definitely hear what you say about the, have space at the end of the day, uh, being valuable. But then we could, we would have to then do, find a different place for the announcements, which could happen. And it, there could be an iteration of this that, that flips that we have space to the end, if, if enough students feel that way. We had, what we did was we got feedback on whether we have space as a concept is good or, or well received. And the answer is yes, for the reasons that, that our students shared. Could it be flipped? I mean, maybe on days one to four would be a little, little easier than this. It's this kind of, there's just so many nuances to the schedule that fine tuning it is, is much more of an effort than it might meet the eye. But conceptually, yes, we, we did ask about the, the feelings of, of we have space. And, and then who cares about homeroom? Of course, there's nothing to be done there. However, there are administrative tasks that just have to be done somewhere. And if we don't call it out as homeroom, well, guess what? That's going to be instructional.
Now, and, and fully appreciate how complex this is. You know, duly noted. One forty does feel super late for a lunch for me. That's like, you know, you shouldn't be going more than three hours without a meal if you're following, you know, most recommendations. So like one forty would mean like you're four and a half hours into your day. So you know, it's, it's not, it's not, you know, the best scenario.
No question about it. It's not ideal. Flipping session three in the afternoon would, would mess with the whole schedule though.
Yeah.
But yeah, you're raising a very good point. Yes, please.
Hey, so one thing you had mentioned homeroom. Homeroom is chopped up pretty small. And then also you said there's not much there. Gavin and I are both Whistling leaders. And that time can be invaluable for us to go out, reach out to our freshmen and make sure they're feeling good and accustomed to the new year. So I think that is something we'd have to work out. Whistling is a huge part of the high school.
See, Harris, that's a, that's actually a really, really important point because if we did away with homeroom, we would still do those important things you were talking about in Whistling. But it would be, it would be in my, my mind, disingenuous to say, well, it just happens. No, it's going to happen out of something else. And this is a problem. Like, no one would want to eliminate that really awesome activity. I didn't realize it happens in homeroom as much as it does else time, but okay. But we want to, we would absolutely want to continue to have that. But I, if we did, I'd want to explicitly allow for it. Otherwise, something else is going to give. I mean, in the end, it's a zero sum game. You got six hours. In this case, the change would be forty minutes to do all these awesome things, including what you just said. So I would definitely not want to, to lose that feature. But I'd also want to be sincere as to how, where it lands in the day rather than just budget.
I absolutely appreciate, appreciate that consideration. Something that's very important to me.
Thank you.
Any other board? Oh, Paul, yes, go ahead.
Just a follow up question for the student reps. In our last meeting, we talked a lot about the amount of time that you have to dedicate to homework. Particularly for the students that choose to take some of the AP classes and some of the advanced classes. Gavin, I think you said you had what, four, five hours?
Last year is six hours. This year's four to, yeah, four or five.
So four to six hours worth of homework on many nights, maybe not every night. And then of course, we have students that have after school activities and sports. So the question I would like to ask is if school started an hour later for you, how realistic is it that you would actually get additional sleep? Or would that time since you'd be getting home later be de- dedicated to, as you were mentioning a little earlier, the time in which you have to get prepared for class for next, for the next day, your after school activities, your homework? Would it actually translate into an extra hours worth of sleep?
Yeah, I think, yeah, that's a good question. I would honestly allocate my time more to getting like prepared for class and like other homework because like I, if I have extra time, I don't usually use it to relax sadly. I use it to make sure that I don't have as much to do the next day. I don't know if that's like representative of everyone, but yeah, I think I would probably not get more sleep. I'd probably just be doing more work.
I think I would probably get more sleep. I'm a unique case in the sense that I attend night school for medicine. I'm obtaining an E M T license right now. So that's like another fixed block in my schedule. But gaining an hour and only losing forty minutes of, or what is it? Is it two thirty five, eighteen, whatever, like you're not, you're, you're not, your day doesn't end at three thirty five, right? So you are gaining a little bit of time there. And as someone that passed your schedule, so back to back, that is something that's valuable to me. Personally, I think I would utilize it. The difference between three ten and two thirty five is not going to affect the time that I go to sleep. But I, I think that's like, like we said, it's not a one size fits all. It's a case by case situation and that requires not making everyone happy, right? Like that's going to be, that's going to be tough.
Jim, I had a question and I'm sorry if I missed it on the charts. But if we do the double tiering, does the middle school also lose eighteen minutes or is it just the high school?
No, just the high school. And the reason that we, one of them, if we're going to go to we're at eight thirty and we're going to, if, in the case of triple, we have to have, or more accurately, double, I guess, here. One of them has to be lesser than the other, shorter than the other in order to make that tier work. Because they're right next to each other. So we can't, we can't have them be or I should say, we need that eighteen, we need to recap to the eighteen minutes in order to make this tiering work. And then same, same sort of thing on this tiering. If it's any longer than we won't have enough time in the morning or we won't have enough time in the afternoon. See what I'm saying? Like the or we would have to push the elementary later or push middle earlier. Does that make sense? Look at your face. It's not.
So with the double, if you go back to the double tiering? So both the middle and high are starting at, so one's eight twenty five, one's eight thirty.
Correct.
Okay. And then three fifteen and three ten. But they aren't losing any time in that schedule. It seems like.
Middle, middle school is not. And the, the high school is losing that eighteen minutes. So that's what I didn't really want to get to in the weeds here, but that end time we're flipping them. So right, right now, the buses pick up at middle first or take a right and go around and take up the high school and then go on the runs.
So you do high school next.
We would flip that.
Okay.
And, and we have to flip that. Otherwise, we're going to be too late in the afternoon for the elementary.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Makes sense.
Any other questions or comments? All right, that ends our final presentation. Thank you, Jim. All right. So now we will finally move on to our first public comment period. And we allow maximum of five speakers to be heard on the same topic. Please limit your comments to three minutes and note that it's not the board's practice to engage in dialogue with speakers when appropriate. We will follow up with responses on the district's website. The first public comment period is for agenda items only. We will have a second public comment period where you can comment on any school related matter. All right. So first one, I think Amy still has left, right?
She is hoping to join online. So if I see her hand raised, I'll give a shout.
Okay. So I'll put hers aside for now. Next is Beth Brolinger. When you approach the party, please state your name and your municipality of residence and the topic of which you're speaking. Thank you.
Can you hear me? All right. Thanks. Yeah, Beth Brolinger, Blue Bell and Whitpain Township. Thanks for letting me talk to you guys. I'd like to briefly address the, the school start time research communication plan. I haven't made my decision about which way I would prefer for this to go. I'm just telling you that I wanted to share some thoughts. I'm waiting for the information about the options. And I was here a month ago in person at the September twenty sixth meeting. And I was happy to see the sort of like clearly spelled out schedule of what's going to be discussed. And I appreciated that. Interestingly, on social media, I've seen a lot of comments about last year's survey. Several people have stated that the survey should be the final deciding factor in regard to school times. And I'm telling you that I disagree. I, I'd like to point out that at the school board meeting a month ago, a school board member said the surveys were sent out and the videos that were done were not done by the board of directors. So when you're saying that there wasn't enough information, we were saying that to the administration, you didn't do the job that you, what we wanted you to do. So that's the redo. We are trying to put forth a plan so that we can vote. That survey is only one data point. The systematic fact finding process is scheduled laid out at the September board meeting a month ago will be all the additional data points. We've heard it today. We'll hear it the next couple of months. And I appreciate that information. I'm just here to say that we should not continue to focus only on a survey that was sent without input from the school board. There will likely be new school board directors elected next week. Now's a good time to understand the current issues and discussions. So I look forward to hearing any comments about the schedule, planned discussions and information, but not just about a survey that we now know was conducted outside of the purview of the core and current school board. Thanks.
Thank you, Beth. Katie, is there anyone online?
We don't have any hands raised at this time.
Okay. All right. Then we'll move to our next one. Carmina Taylor.
So this is in reference to the mentoring program that was mentioned, Guy Wright. I just want to say that since Lynn Fields was principal, I myself and two other alumni presented a mentoring program for the high school students. So Lynn's been gone, but almost so for over ten years, my son graduated in two thousand and twelve. So I know what it's like to raise a black boy in the high school. And I just, I just need you to know that black alumni know what it's like to be a Wissahickin student. And they are the most appropriate people to offer and to get supported to give the black students support. And I, I looked at an email that I had on April eighteenth of last year. And we came as alumni to speak, but I remember them saying, don't put Carmina's face on the flyer because they won't do it because Carmina's face is on the flyer. And it's been my experience, quite specifically, that everything that is attached to my name, I receive opposition at central administration. And I want you to know how disgusted I am to have sat there at that table. I'm going to give you emails from Lynn Fields to Lynn Blair, where we as black alumni have offered ourselves to this school district and over the last past eight years. I don't know if you're aware, but two weeks ago, there was a fight in the parking lot after the football game. And three black male seniors were in the parking lot with ski masks on, beating up another kid. Last spring, you had ten black boys fighting each other. And they all got misdemeanors. Three didn't come back to the school district. Black male alumni have a firsthand experience how to help students cope with being a black male student. I have firsthand I have firsthand experience of what it means to be a black girl on the field hockey team, lacrosse team, honors classes. So I know what it's like. So I want it to be noted because I think factual context matters. I'm gonna provide you with a timeline of emails where we have consistently offered ourselves to this school district and I've received nothing but opposition. And then I remember, and I want, I'm gonna send you the link to the Hall of Fame reel that I had just last Friday. There's three pictures in my Hall of Fame reel where me and black alumni came last fall to talk to students. It's in my reel. And ever since that day, we have had opposition to come back and be mentors. Scheduling changes, we wanted to do uh, an event and it all of a sudden conflicted with the bonfire or something else, so we couldn't do it. So for factual contact, black alumni have been consistent in wanting to be mentors for the students that are here. I'm gonna send you a follow-up email and I want you to know that it's directly because of me and Dr. Chris Field. Again and again, there's a pattern against me. And I remember black.
Carmina, I'm so sorry.
All right, I'm gonna only abide this time, Amy.
Our, our practice is to do three minutes.
But you also have the right to waive. And you should have cut me off, but at the end of the day, I understand that this has been done.
I mean, I'm not gonna argue with you. We just have a lot of speakers this evening. Well, this is, this is our meeting. Is there anyone online?
Yes, we have Darren Grossman.
Hey Darren, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hello? Okay, great. I wanted to comment on the school start times. I know I'd sent most of you an email. I just kinda wanted to reiterate a couple of things from, I did watch the uh, I don't know her name, the doctor at the beginning of the meeting that did that uh, presentation. Um, and obviously we weren't able to answer questions, but one point I wanted to make is that the American Psychological Association says that stress is actually the biggest factor in losing sleep. And I would ask the board to consider, would it be stressful for a child to have to rush to activities because we're the only district in the area getting out later? You know, practices aren't gonna accommodate with students. Extra jobs are not gonna accommodate with students. There's only six districts in the county that start later. None of them are really in our immediate area. So when you look at changing the start time and we're the only ones that do it, we're putting our students at a huge disadvantage outside of the school. As far as sleep goes, kids can sleep. You know, there, again, stress can affect you. There's many things that affect sleep and, and that, that nice lady. And again, I did enjoy parts of her presentation, but I think it's, you know, it's a very skewed data on trying to make a narrative that really doesn't really hold up when you look at all the different reasons people don't sleep. Like yes, her, her points are valid and that is a, you know, reasons people don't sleep, but there's many other reasons as well, including poor parenting, by the way. Um, we're all parents, you know, I have two in Stony Creek that are young and my kids go to bed. You know why? Cause my wife and I make them go to bed. And, you know, because we're actively involved in our children's lives. And my opinion is what happened over the weekend with the football game with the Jewish kids and what that woman just talked about with the black community. There's so many other issues the school board should be addressing. And we're wasting all this time on something that the two students on the boards clearly stated today, the majority of faculty, the majority of students do not want. You know, and, and to me, it's just like, there's so many, you know, my daughter's in second grade in Stony, they lost the second grade teacher, they didn't replace them. And we're worried about what time school's gonna start. Why don't we worry about getting more teachers so that my daughter doesn't have twenty-seven kids in her class, however many kids she has? I, I really feel that this should be an open and shut issue. It doesn't make sense. Lower Marion, by the way, one of the dishes that does, it has their own buses, like their own busing, so it's a little different for them. You know, they have, they, they, the buses only bus them, so it's, it's a lot easier. You know, they're not providing buses to other schools and stuff and things like that, so I, I, I feel like at the end of the day, this issue should, really isn't that complicated. There's a lot more negatives than positives. I outlined a lot of them in emails I wrote to you guys and I haven't heard anybody address any of those concerns today and probably won't. Because at the end of the day, there's a lot more to start time than just, well, a kid's gonna sleep. Okay, at what cost? You know, I have a second grader who's scared of the dark and you know what, now she doesn't bus, it just doesn't affect me, but I wouldn't want her walking home and, you know, getting off the bus at four thirty when it's kinda dusk out, she'd be scared. So that's all, and I appreciate the time.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Grossman. And anyone that does have comments regarding the issue, um, as Dr. Chris Field mentioned earlier, we do have somewhere where you can submit comments online and they will all be centrally gathered for the board to review. So that is the best place to submit those comments or questions. Um, next we have Eric Holmquist.
Thank you. My name's Eric Holmquist. I'm a resident of Lower Gwinnett with my family. And I wanna speak on this summer topic and, and echo some of the themes, but, but also just put a little more nuance on this. I, I'm, I'm really trying to understand this, this topic and, and the, the central focus of it. I mean, putting aside the survey, I mean, that makes a fair point. I think it's a notable data point, but I think if we feel that it's still, you know, bears investigation, okay, fine. At the same time, there are studies on this and they seem to consistently show that at least for elementary school, there's no discernible difference in start time. And for middle school and high school, there is a marginal, if not anecdotal benefit to it. So that in and of itself already starts to raise questions and I, I appreciated Dr. Morse's comments. But as I'm watching your presentation, she described a whole lot of factors that influence the quality of a student's sleep. You know, we didn't see in that entire presentation was start time of morning tasks. It wasn't in there. It wasn't even a factor that she addressed. In fact, when asked, is that a factor? She said, well, that, that might make a difference. But frankly, you're not really giving him any, any skills to be able to manage life balance. All the factors she talked about that can affect a student's sleep, almost every single one is within their control. And I think the point she was making about, I think there's ways that you could actually be encouraging and coaching students to be responsible with their lifestyle, their schedule, to accommodate for that sleep. But instead, we've, we're still talking about this. And like, I've been part of many presentations in my corporate life where you have to discuss things that are hard, that are disruptive, that are change. People are gonna fight it, they're not gonna like it. But to push it, you have to have firm foundation. But all I've heard so far is we're talking about a proposal that would create immense disruption to school schedules, academic schedules, athletic schedules, home schedules. We're talking about additional cost, we're talking about impacting employment, we're talking about taking time away from the school day. And yet we're wrapping this for the benefit of a student when we can solve that in other ways. I cannot for the life of me figure out what is the, what, what a problem we trying to solve. Cause if what we're trying to solve is improved lifestyle, health balance with our students, the doctor was very clear, that's not the way to do it. There's better ways we could do it that wouldn't turn a whole lot of things upside down. Now, I, I appreciate you're trying to work with the data, trying to analyze it. And as a sidebar, appreciated your graphics, but if I could ask one request, as we go through this process, as you show the graphic of times, could you make the graphics proportional to the time slot? Cause it's hard to understand what those mean when they're not proportional. So again, I'm all for wrestling with things, but I'm really struggling to understand the problem that you guys think you're trying to solve. When, as others have said, we have problems we could be solving. Thank you.
Thank you, Sir Holmquist. All right, anyone online? Okay, then we have Tara Grave.
Good evening, Tara Grave. I live in Ambler Borough. I'm just here to just talk real quick about the school start times. I already emailed you, you know, my thoughts. Um, I did just wanna touch on the survey again, like as everybody echoed in the room, there's all these different nuances for everybody's schedules and lives and how this would affect us. And I just really believe that you should resurvey the community after, I, and I also wanna say thank you for providing all the details in these presentations as we move through the next few months. Um, I am paying attention and reading them and I have submitted my feedback um, directly to the board, through the feedback button. But I also do think it's important to resurvey the community after we've had a chance to digest all this information and all this conversation around it. So that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grave. Anyone online? All right, and it does look like we have any other speakers. So we'll move past the first public comment period onto board president report. And this evening I have no informational or action item. A superintendent report.
Nothing additional from me.
Uh, assistant superintendent report.
I have no informational items and no action items, however, um, I do have a brief update. I know the board was curious about how we're doing with staffing the after school, elementary after school program. We are fully staffed, so we're very excited to be able to get that program going on time. Yeah, yeah. Thank you for the board's support.
Well, that's wonderful news. Thank you. Um, our board solicitor report, Jeff.
I have no report.
Board secretary report.
At the next meeting, we will be requesting approval of the September twenty-sixth work session meeting, the October second regular board meeting and the uh, October sixteenth health and wellness committee meeting minutes.
Great, um, I'm assuming no questions or comments. All right, board secretary report.
Thank you. Uh, we're, at the next meeting, we'll be requesting acceptance and minuting of the treasurer report for September thirty with twenty-three.
Thank you, Wade. Any comments or questions? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to human res- oh, yeah, human resources, or no, board treasurer, I'm sorry. I did them backwards, I'm so sorry.
When, when you said uh, sec- uh, secretary's report, I did the treasurers cause I thought that's what you meant.
Thank you, I appreciate that. All right, human resources report.
Thirteen.
Thirteen, all right, my turn.
Good evening. Um, for your review, review tonight, or seven action items under section thirteen of the human resources report. The first two action items include resignations of retirement, appointments, a change of status, extracurricular changes and volunteer additions. Item three is for the approval of column movements on the salary schedule for specific levels of educational attainment. Item four includes the approval of the winter extracurricular sports and activities. Thirteen point five is the ratification for conferences attended. Thirteen point six is a revised job description. And thirteen point seven is for a speech and language pathology services to cover a leave of absence. And that concludes my report.
Thanks so much, Danielle. Any comments or questions?
I have a question. Yeah, um, thanks Danielle. I, I was a student athlete in, in high school and I know how important my coaches were to me. And so as I look at voting on another long list of coaches for the year, or I guess it's just the winter session right now, I'm wondering how we evaluate our coaches? Or if there's a way that, if you don't know right now, or you could get back to us next week on that, on that issue. Cause it's important to me, if I'm voting, to keep these coaches in that I know that they're, you know, the right people to be around our students.
Absolutely, I'll be happy to get that for you this week. Thanks.
And um, I wanna kind of build on that and it's, you know, I would like for it to be a systematic evaluation, meaning that there's an opportunity for even confidential information or people to feel like they can come forward to share that information. Cause some of the things that I am concerned about is that there's not a lot of speaking up or speaking out because there's this fear that they might not make the team. They may not get playing time, they may not whatever. And so there's been almost like a culture of not saying anything because we don't have a mechanism in place so people can feel confident about what they're sharing without them in, without it impacting them personally. So that is also a very, very important aspect. And if we don't have it in place, then I would like for us to move in that direction ASAP. My second question is thirteen point six. Why are we eliminating the qualification from the PSBA requirement? And then who will prepare the CFR moving forward?
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, the reason uh, they, there was, I did a draft of this and the qualifications for uh, PSBRA and ASBO, et cetera, I just don't think are uh, necessary. Um, I've never been a member of those uh, to the point where you have to go through certification and those types of things. And frankly, I think some people feel that your time is better spent uh, locally doing things local as opposed to signing up for things solely to be a, whatever these letters are. I don't think it's a bad thing. I think is um, the, the um, candidates are considered if they have them and they have uh, gained value from them, that would be great. I certainly don't think anybody should be precluded from that. Uh, your second question about the CAFR is um, that's really more the assistant business administrator. Um, so that's why I was eliminated from this.
Thank you.
Um, just on a, just a common follow-up on that comment, uh, the reason we're revising the, the job description for business administrator because uh, name number one in thirteen point one is the retirement of our very own Wade Coleman uh, at the end of this school year, and it'll be the end of an era. And we have a big, big shoes to fill. Um, but I appreciate that Wade's giving us plenty of advance notice to um, find a suitable replacement for him and then maybe allow for some uh, overlap time for knowledge transfer. But thanks. Oh, and regarding the PSBA and uh, PRS, whatever thing, um, just personally, I've taken some of the courses and I agree with Wade that they should not be um, considered qualifications or required qualifications for a business administrator. I mean, they, they are beneficial and useful, but uh, uh, the only people who take those are generally other business administrators uh, in Pennsylvania. And so if that was a requirement, it would preclude us from looking at candidates who might be coming from a Fortune five hundred company as a CFO or anyone outside of uh, Pennsylvania public schools. Thanks.
Great, any other comments or questions? The only thing I would comment on is thirteen point five. I do wanna thank everyone for um, allowing Zephy, Joe and I to go to the PSBA conference. It was wonderful to see Jim and the Moonway present at that conference. It was a wonderful presentation. Um, so thank you both for doing that and I thank the board for allowing us to go and have that experience. So thank you. All right, moving on to our committee reports, we now have our communications committee. Stephanie?
Uh, I guess um, I, I'm alerting everyone of what was on their table. Um, so we have our twenty-two, twenty-three annual report, which um, is a wonderful document and uh, represents all the things that we've accomplished. I know some people have received theirs in the mail. I have not received mine in the mail, so.
Neither have I.
So I, I'm assuming they're going out in waves, so. Ev- you got yours? Okay, so, so everyone in this district should be receiving one because even if you don't have a student in the school, in the school, you still are, are part of the community and everybody receives a copy. So look out for yours if it has not arrived. It's also available digitally on our website. Thank you. Nothing else.
And I would just note the one typo in it. Our turf fields will be completed in just a few weeks, when's it, eleven twenty? Uh, so ribbon cutting? I'm blanking on the exact date, but sometime in November we'll be doing the ribbon.
Which, which day's ribbon cutting? Yeah.
Oh, I guess you're right. Okay, so yeah, so it will just be in a couple of weeks, so not twenty twenty-four, but twenty twenty-three. I just wanted to note that. Anything else, Stephanie? All right, any comments or questions?
I, I would like to comment that we are still second lowest in taxes in Montgomery County.
That is awesome. Thank you for pointing that out. Um, all right, uh, curriculum and technology committee report, Ronnie?
Dr. Delon will readily tell us all the things in that report.
Yes, thank you. Uh, this evening we have no informational items. We have five items will be seeking uh, approval uh, at the November thirteenth board meeting. Um, item number one is, is an annual request for approval of our twenty twenty-three graduates, so our graduates from last school year. Item number two is an annual request to approve um, uh, the acceptance and expenditures for the federal and state grant funds for this school year. Item number three is a request uh, for ratification of outplaced services for two students. Item number four is a request for approval of the second payment to the MCIU for the age of beginner services. And item number five is a request for approval of payments to Doc- Dr. Claudia Chernow, who's a psychiatrist, who um, um, facilitates psychiatric evaluations for the district. Um, so that is to approve us for payments for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So um, go ahead, yes, question?
Two quick questions. So I'm assuming. So I'm assuming fifteen point one, it's just more like you're ensuring that everything is in place. That's why there's that lag. Okay.
Yes.
Um makes sense. And then fifteen point five. So is this just is this uh a service that we use for specific cases, or is this for general, like, can you
Yes.
uh contextualize that a little bit?
Thank you for the question. Um we use the services of Dr. Chernow for specialized cases. Um not all of our cases. So in our typical evaluation process, we have school psychologists who conduct the multidisciplinary evaluation process. Um when there are unique and extenuating circumstances, oftentimes with mental illness involved, we seek the services of a psychiatric evaluation. So it's it's a rare occurrence, but it does happen maybe maybe less than a dozen times throughout the school year. So we're seeking approval for this amount to um so that we don't have to continually come back to the board.
Okay, great. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right, then we'll move on. Facilities and Transportation, Joe?
Thank you. Um no informational items this evening, and we have uh three um action items for discussion and then vote in the next meeting. And I'm gonna ask Wade maybe to give us a quick summary of the three, please.
Thank you. Um the first one is just obsolescence of a van which um we've uh we needed to obsolete to get rid of eventually. The second is um permitting fees for the Blue Bell addition and renovation. And the third item is the award of Shitty Grove and Lower Gwinnett School Emergency Generator Replacement. We had uh six bids, very, very competitive, and we're very pleased with the contractor and the result of the bid, so we're gonna request awarding of that at the next meeting.
Thanks, Wade. Any uh questions? All right, that's it.
Thanks, Joe. Thanks, Wade. Uh Finance Committee Report, David.
Thanks, Amy. Um the Finance Committee Report has no informational items. There are seven action items uh for consideration next week. Um Wade, would you please present those?
Uh thank you very much. Um so the first is the financial reports. The second is, as part of the Blue Bell uh construction project, we are required, and it's probably a very good idea anyway, if it wasn't required, is to obtain builder's risk insurance, and that's provided in the item number two. Item three, we've discussed sort of globally and it's um that we are going to have increased number of assessment appeals. Uh several of them are going to be uh reductions. Um so this is bringing forward one of those um assessment appeal conclusions, and there's going to be more over the coming uh months. The fourth item is every four years, we go out for a copier proposals. Uh right now, we're still analyzing it, but and you have the results of all of the proposals. Um I think it's pronounced dossier is low, and those are the amounts um uh relating to both black and white and fixed cost copier uh contract for the four-year timeframe. The amounts are very, very similar to what we had uh have currently. Number five is uh really just a housekeeping. Um we, as a school district, are part of the Tax Collection Committee, um which is a joint of municipalities and school districts for the earned income tax collection. And with uh Lou Kim joining the business office, it is appointing her as my delegate to that committee. Item uh six is the paper bid uh which was going had gone through the IU. We've been happy with the supply, which we weren't happy with last year. So this is bringing forward that uh request for approval. And then item seven is the list of payments, which is a normal item.
Thank you, Wade. Are are there any questions?
Great. Thank you so much for the report. Um we'll now move on to our Policy Committee Report, Marshall.
Thank you, Amy. We have no informational items this evening. We do have eight action items. Uh I will be requesting approval next week of the eight policies that were originally reviewed at our September eighteenth meeting, having to do with our meetings, gifted education, home education, admission of students, gifts, and computerized personal information. Uh if everyone will note, we have already done the uh approval of the first reading, and so this will be the second and final reading uh next week. And with that, I'll let everybody get home and get a full night's sleep.
Thank you, Marshall. No comments or questions? All right, seeing none. Rachel Equity Oversight Committee, Paul?
Thanks, Amy. Uh we have no items this evening, but I do want to recap our uh meeting, which took place October sixteenth at seven PM. Uh we had a great presentation from the administration on special education identification. Um Dr. Duane, do you want to give a quick overview of presentation?
Sure, thank you. Um we walked through the data on the website um to take a look at um the trends that we saw in the data in terms of the disparities that we see specifically with our students of color, our black students and Hispanic students. Um and we reviewed some of the action steps that the district has put in place since last year when we had conversations. We also opened the floor, which is the most um enriching part of the meetings, is when we open the floor to the community members and students and staff and board members who are on that committee to share thoughts and feedback and really to push us um to consider new ways of approaching some of our action steps. Um at that meeting, we also reviewed the upcoming dates for the committee throughout the school year, and we um highlighted the November twentieth meeting, which is scheduled for a community conversation. So we really pushed that uh to to hopefully um get the committee members uh to join that session. Um we know how invaluable it was last year, um and so we're really looking forward to the first of two community conversations this year. That'll be coming up on November twentieth. Thank you.
Where will it be?
Yes, at the Ambler um Borough. And we'll all will be listed on the website, and so you'll have dates, times, and locations. Um but uh thank you, Dr. Duane, for that. Um and just to highlight the the reason for that, we wanted to be able to get more input from the community, have more community conversations where we get input from the broader stakeholders. Um and these will be opportunities to do that. So uh we're looking forward to that, and um thank all who attended the meeting, and hopefully you'll be able to attend our next meeting.
Thank you, Paul. All right, um we have next Health, Wellness, and Safety. Rosetta is not here this evening, and since we're running kind of late, maybe we'll just hold off on that to our next meeting, and she can update us then. A report of board representatives, extracurricular, Marshall?
I have nothing. Thank you.
And I have nothing for MCIU. North Monca? Nothing, okay. PSBA?
No, but for employee relations, I do want to note that um we did set up a a meeting that wasn't originally on the agenda for next week. Um we're meeting with WASA to discuss specifically the topic of school start time because it is really important for us to hear from from the teachers and staff from their perspective. So um you know, why are we still talking about this was the question asked, and I want to answer it's because we're still gathering information that wasn't previously gathered, and I think we owe it to the community to do the due diligence. And I don't know the outcome. I don't know what it's gonna be, but at least we really flushed it out and made sure that we had the data we needed to make the decision, and this is definitely part of that. I value the teachers' input.
And I just want to clarify, it's not WASA, it's WWEA.
Excuse me, I misspoke.
Yeah, no, that's okay.
WWEA, yeah.
Just wanted to be clear.
Staff and teachers, WWEA. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other comments or questions? All right, then we'll move on to our second public comment period. Again, we allow a maximum of five speakers on any particular topic. Please limit your comments to three minutes, and note that it's not the board's practice to engage in dialogue. When appropriate, we will post comments or responses on the website. All right, first we have Beth Brillinger. Oh, and again, state your name and municipality of residence as well. Thank you. And topic.
All right, thanks. Beth Brillinger, Blue Bell, Woodpein Township. Uh so we all know that we're in the midst of an election season, and candidates will sometimes share inaccurate information to cast doubt on other candidates. I understand that. Um for example, a committee member for one political party shared a Facebook post stating that Wissahican reading proficiency level is below fifty percent. Fortunately, for Wissahican, that's not true. The actual number is ninety-two percent, according to the US News and World Report, and it's well above the stated average, I mean, the state average of seventy percent. For the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one below fifty percent data results posted on the P A DOE website, there was no data even available for Wissahican in twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one due to COVID. The information shared was not correct. Wissahican rankings have not experienced the massive slide that some data shared would like to portray. To put things in perspective, there are eight ninety-five public high schools in Pennsylvania in five hundred public districts. There are thirteen thousand public school districts in the US and over twenty-three thousand public high schools nationwide. The school ranking site niche ranks Wissahican number fifteen out of five hundred districts in PA and gives us an A plus. In other words, Wissahican is in the top three percent. US News and World Report ranks our high school as number twenty-four in PA and number seven ninety-two nationally. That is top three percent in the state and top three percent nationally. School Digger ranks us at number fourteen. Top three percent. This district ranks very highly. Impact on property values? It must be working. I just saw a house listed yesterday on Brookside Avenue that is about thirteen hundred square feet, was purchased in August of this year for three hundred and sixty-five thousand and is now listed for sale for six hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. It looks amazing. I'm not interested in buying this house. I'm interested in learning who the contractor was. We have amazing administrators, teachers, and staff. Our students work extraordinarily hard. Their combined efforts put Wissahican School District in the top three percent of PA districts and nationally. Thanks.
Thank you, Beth. Is there anyone registered online, Kitty? Okay, who do we have?
We have Rochelle Marcola.
Okay, Rochelle, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Great. Hi, I'm with Toshiba Business Solutions. Um I just wanted to ask a question in regards to um the a number four item in approval for Dossier. Um I just wanted to ask a question regarding the bid specifications. And I was curious if um the bid specification requirement was to not exceed or meet the current configurations of the copiers.
We can provide an answer on on our website. Thank you. Is there anything else, Rochelle? I'm sorry.
No, that was it.
Okay, thank you. All right, next in person, we have uh William Fennell.
Uh William Fennell, Ambler Borough. I'm not a public speaker. I'm not a politician. I'm a upset father first right now. Um I want to deal with, and I'm gonna have to do a little education because being here for the process tonight was education for me to see how long the process can be. I'm not gonna hold you. I see you have two forty-one left. I want to address the fact that, you know, on public record, that Dr. Pressfield, this is who I am. You never took the time to meet me or talk to me in regard to my daughter's situation and the humiliation that she's been exposed to at that school, at Wissahican High School. I want to address the cultural differences. And so my education will be to find out, one, how to interact with you where you would not be allowed to ignore me the next time I reach out to you, that you will not be allowed to alienate my daughter from having an appeal process to to a situation that I feel was grossly mismanaged. And two, just to be a man and talk to me person to person. An email is not communication. It's just reaching out. It's not a conversation. So this is not the last you're hearing me. I got a minute forty-five left that I don't need to use because that's all I need to say about this. And contrary to your inability to allow her, Ms. Taylor will be advocating to educate me, so I don't need an advocate because you will not be allowed to neglect my daughter from having the advocacy that she's had since being in the school district. I grew up in the school district. I've lived in the school district my whole life. So I know how things have to go. It's unfortunate that I have to be here to address you rather than having to wait for your response two and a half weeks after an incident. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. All right, um so, Karmina, we have two sheets for you. We do allow three minutes per speaker. We usually list a number at the bottom so you can put more than one item. So we have, you can.
So I am, I'm, I am speaking, or I broke on based on Mr. Fennell, so that's two people on the same topic. Right?
No, but you're allowed up to three topics.
Of the. Karmina. I'm speaking on his subject, so isn't that two speakers on the same subject? If you look at the sheet.
About you're one person, and you're talking in the second public comment period, and you can talk about three items during that three minutes, and you have two sheets listing these items.
All right, Amy, I'm ready for this. I'll just go forward. Um first of all, to clarify, the issue is Mr. Fennell asked specifically if I could be an advocate for him to navigate a discipline issue, and he was denied. But yet Tony Horton here, that isn't a resident, has no alumni, has full access to every kid. A parent asked for me, and it was said no. And we send an advocacy contract that we've I've always had, been had in the in the in the middle school, and he said no. Secondly, we sent him policy two one eight point one, Marshall. And um that gives a superintendent discretion to reduce a disciplinary infraction based on circumstances. That was brought to that attention. It was not even thought of. I brought a policy up. And so I'm also coming to the policymaking body because I was told in the email if the law doesn't make someone do something, they don't have to. His daughter is not an IP, so she doesn't have a federally uh afforded opportunity to have an advocate. So I'm asking the board to consider making a district policy that if a parent wants an advocate, that parent should be honored. So there should be a policy to allow parents that are non-IEP parents to have an advocate. Hall of Fame. You all may have known I got inducted on Friday. My mother and I are now the first black mother and daughter inducted into the Wissahican Hall of Fame. Two-thirds of the people could not come there because it started at five thirty on a Friday night. Who does that? But because we're forced to deal with a district sanctioned event, we have to adjust to what the district did. But yet nobody here from the district came. No school board director was there. The superintendent wasn't there. Is is the Assistant Superintendent? So there was a district event for alumni, but no district representative, but it started at five thirty on a Friday. Does that make sense? I'll be back next week because I think it's also ridiculous that you would give somebody three minutes for three major topics. I have more to say, but I want this all on record, and if you tune me out, it's fine because people are listening to me, and people are listening to how watching how you react to me.
Thank you, Karmina. Is there anyone online?
Yeah, we have two hands raised on Zoom, so I'll start with Jen Rappaport.
Okay, Jen, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hey, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um I was just giving a call about a couple of things. Um school time, I've called about that before. Um, you know, follow through the process. Hopefully, the community, the whole community is surveyed again, um taking into consideration, you know, not just schedules, but also traffic patterns. It's gonna affect everybody, even daily commuters, businesses, uh people getting to work on time. But tonight, I was just giving a call about the ratings a little bit. Um I've been selling people houses in this school district for the last nine, ten years, and people look to move to Wissahican because they were number eleven, because they were number twelve. We were so far set apart from other districts. Um back when we were twelfth, places like uh PW, they were like thirty-eighth or fortieth. Upper Dublin was thirty-eighth, thirty-ninth. Now, on the US News ranking, and I know there's a number of different ranking systems, but taking this one here, we're coming in at twenty-four, whereas they've improved. They've improved, coming closer to us, uh down around thirty or thirty-one. And then PW, I think, is in the thirties as well, thirty-sixth or thirty-seventh. They're closing in the gap. We're going one way, and they're coming closer to us. Uh so it's, you know, it's not really as much of a brag anymore uh like it used to be. Come on over to Wissahican, we are clearly, we're not clearly that much better than everybody else anymore, and there's a decline. And, you know, I'm sure we get it back. And, you know, I'm sure we get it back. We just need to focus on the right things, and all of this timing spent on, you know, changing the start times. I don't think that's gonna do it. Um, that's not gonna help us get our ranking back. And, um, all right, the house on Brookside, if anybody takes a look at that online, that's, uh, becoming a big joke across social media. So, um, I know that the previous caller that called in mentioned that and the value. I'd suggest taking a look at that. There's some awfully funny comments about it. That's all I had to say.
All right, thanks, Jen. All right, our next in-person speaker is Yornel Hock.
Thank you. How are you guys? I'm a new resident of, um, the Amber Township, which I love. Um, but I, I need help. Um, I spoke to Mr. Wade about two weeks ago. I need help with getting my daughter to school for the next couple of days and try to buy myself a new car. Um, transportation has been very inconvenient. Uh, it is 35 minutes to walk here, um, every morning. And for my daughter to leave out 6:30, 6:45 in the morning is dark, and it's kinda scary. I even walk with her. Um, I haven't yet walked at 6:30 or 6:45 in the morning, but I do leave out at 7:00. And it doesn't give us more, much time to get her, much time to get settled into class, for which she's late, she's, um, getting in trouble, um, she's being penalized. And there are two buses that pass my apartment, and there's a smaller bus that goes right to, like, in front of my apartment as well. Um, for the past two weeks since I spoke to Mr. Wade, I have been Ubering her in the morning, and I just walk back home, so that way she gets to school on time. But I just need help for the next couple of days to get her to, to school, or either just to wait a couple of minutes so I can get into the building without her being in trouble. That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
I forget, you said there was someone else online?
Yes, we have Liz.
Uh, Liz, you can go ahead and unmute yourself. Liz, are you there?
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yeah, now we can. Thank you.
Hi, thanks. Um, so I am just calling in to, um, I wanted to comment first on Dr. Morris's presentation. Um, I think that gave everybody a lot to, uh, digest. Um, one part of it that I did feel...
Liz, I'm sorry. Just hold on one second. Katie, is the timer working? Mm-hmm. And Liz, I'm so sorry, just take your last name also, just so we have a record.
Absolutely. Uh, Elizabeth Sarfati, I'm from, uh, Blue Bell Whitney Township. Um, so I'm not, I'm not keeping track of the timer. Um, Dr. Morris had pointed out in the presentation, um, that she had conferred with a colleague at one point who had, um, helped to implement, um, a time change in a district, and, um, the feedback that she'd gotten, and, and, again, I'm gonna go back and, and re-watch this, um, to digest it again, as I mentioned, but, um, when students were not part of the decision, um, it had an, um, a negative outcome. Um, and I think that that really needs to be taken into consideration, given the fact that, uh, the survey, which gave us multiple data points, um, you know, from staff, um, who were, you know, 80% against any type of change down to the students, um, had, um, you know, wanted to keep things the same. Um, and if we're not taking that into consideration with what Dr. Moore said to us, um, earlier, we're, we're looking for trouble. Um, and I hate to see that. Um, and I guess the other thing I did wanna comment on was, um, I think the caller before, before me said how the, the, the rankings that got brought up by a previous presenter or a commenter, um, and cherry picking data in, in that regard's not gonna give anybody, um, it's not gonna do a service to anyone if we're not looking at the facts of, um, a slip, uh, from, starting in 2020 with, with rankings according to US News and World Report, um, up until now. Um, we're still in the top, as was stated, but again, if we're gonna cherry pick data and just present it like that, um, it's not, it's not doing a service to anyone. That's all I wanted to say. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Um, next is Stacy DeWitt. Let's see.
Perfect. Hi, I'm Stacy DeWitt. I am Whitney Township. I have two children in the middle school, and I wanna talk a little bit about the start times. Uh, I wasn't gonna talk, just to let you all know. Number one, thank you to the board for doing due diligence. I work with scientists and lawyers all day, and that's all I hear is due diligence. Um, I think it's important to follow through with the process till the end, so we're making sure we make the best decision overall. I'm gonna say, I think the district putting out a survey at the beginning was dumb, to be perfectly honest. I've also worked in surveying, and until you have all the information, you're not giving anybody a full picture of anything that they can make a good decision on. I'm in favor of changing the start time, but those questions were, took me all over the place, to be perfectly honest. The one thing I did wanna bring up was, there was a speaker in the first, was it the first one? Who spoke about better parenting of your children with regard to sleep. My children go to bed on the earlier side of middle schoolers. We're putting down electronics at 8:45. We're Jewish, we sing Shema and do bedtime stuff by 9:00. My eighth grader cannot fall asleep. She has taken melatonin, she does whatever. Just physiologically, they are, it's tough for them to fall asleep at an earlier hour. And when they say, well, didn't you make them go to bed earlier? I'm sorry, that doesn't work. And then when they try to get up, my kids take a bus that's at 6:42 in the morning. It is dark, and we're now getting into cold, and they are falling asleep on my kitchen counters at 6:00 AM trying to get up. I know it doesn't work for everybody, but we really need to take this process seriously and consider that when we talk about drops in ranking of anything or any dips in academic, whatever we can do to improve our children's chances at performing well, I think have to be taken seriously. A survey is great. I could survey people all day long and, and get a million different answers of what they want. But at the end of the day, we need to make decisions that best make our students' lives better. And, and that's really it. Um, also, if we could reduce the number of homework hours, that'd be fantastic. My eighth grader is already starting to freak out for ninth grade, and I, it, it's, it's really stressful on me, so, thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. Is there anyone online? Okay.
Yes, we have Shelley.
Shelley, you can go ahead and unmute yourself. Oh, and Shelley, please state your last name also. Shelley, are you there? Is there anyone else registered online?
There's no one else registered, just Shelley.
Okay. All right, well, we're right. Sorry, Shelley. All right, um, we'll now move on to board comments, um, if nobody else registered in person. Um, I did want to comment that I went to senior night on Friday night, um, got to see the football players, cheerleaders, and band, so that was really nice. And I did wanna comment, uh, Dr. Chrisfield was at, um, the alumni induction Hall of Fame.
Yes.
Yes, yeah. We actually, we met up afterwards at the, at the senior night. So I know Dr. Chrisfield was present, and he maybe could share a little bit about that, but, um, yeah, there were a lot of great events on Friday evening, packed schedule, but, um, it was great to see the seniors, um, on the field that night. Um, any other board comments? Marshall?
Yeah, thank you, Amy. Um, I wanted to acknowledge, uh, the sad passing this past week of Ian Berg. Um, Ian was not only a Wissahican parent, uh, Ian was the president of the Blue Bell Country Club Homeowners Association, and he was a candidate, um, um, for, uh, school board in the coming election. Um, and I think that, uh, what it shows is Ian was not only a community volunteer dedicated to, uh, the place in which he lived, uh, but he was willing to put his name on a ballot. Uh, he was willing to, um, try and do something for, uh, the betterment of our community, for our students' families. Uh, and, uh, he'll be missed by all of his family and friends. Um, and I, uh, wanted to express my personal condolences, uh, not only for me, but on behalf of the rest of the board, uh, to Ian and his family, uh, and may his memory be a blessing.
Thank you, Marshall. Any other comments? All right, then seeing done, we have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.